Good evening. I'm calling to order this special meeting Tuesday, August 1, 2023, of the Ramapo Indian Hills Regional High School District Board of Education. Ms. Zino, would you do me the honor of reading the board president's announcement?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. The board president's announcement, "The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon." In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Business Administrator Board Secretary has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8B and guidance from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Services. In addition, please be aware that employees of the school district retain the right of privacy and shall retain all rights regarding defamation and slander according to the laws of New Jersey. The board shall not be held liable for comments made by members of the public, and in order to protect the privacy rights of employees in the district, the board shall not respond to statements made by the public or of or about district employees. On the roll call, Mr. Bogdansky?
Here.
I'm sorry, I just have to interrupt you to make sure the procedure is followed. 155.01, remote attendance by board members for in-person board meetings. At the call of order to the meeting, the presiding officer shall inform all board members and others in attendance at the meeting of the identity of two absent board members, their physical location, and that the absent member has provided the board secretary with notice and reasons why their physical attendance is impossible or impracticable, impractical in accordance with the requirements of this policy. I believe we have Ms. Helen Kulakortis and Ms. Kim Ansh that are unable to attend the meeting for the reasons that I described in the policy. I'd like to call on each one of them to answer the questions per the policy.
Would you like me to speak?
Yes, please.
Hi, it's Helen Kulakortis. I am out of the country, and I am doing this meeting via Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. Kulakortis.
Hi, it's Kim Ansh. I am out of town, and I'm doing this meeting via Zoom.
Thank you so much. The secretary was able, as I was following the emails, to proceed to establish the telephone and video conference connection with the absent board members. I have identified the two board members that are absent on appropriate inquiry. I can see them, I recognize them, and I also recognize their voices. I heard their voices, I heard their volume on the microphone, so I believe that all present can hear and interact with them according to the requirements of our board policy. So now you can commence the roll call. Thank you.
Mr. Bogdansky?
Here.
Mr. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Emelo?
Here.
Ms. King?
Here.
Ms. Kulakortis?
Here.
Dr. Lorenz?
Here.
Ms. Mariani?
Here.
Ms. Ansh?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
The board is quorum is present.
Thank you so much. Could you please all stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Point of order, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Given the large turnout tonight, I'd like to make a motion to extend the first public comments from 30 minutes to one hour.
Second. Excuse me, the board, we're going to have to have board discussion on this. I was actually going to make a motion myself, seeing how things go. So we're going to have board discussion on this. It looks like we have, I don't know, maybe about 50, 60 people in the audience. We have two board, two board, two public comments. I was actually going to suggest that we extend the whole policy. I know that there's a motion pending for one hour and a half altogether because board policy says we're limited to one hour. So do you want to do one hour? Is the reason why you want to make sure is that board members hear more definitively before we vote? Is that what your, the aim of your motion is?
I'm motioning that we extend the first session from 30 minutes to one hour.
Okay. And the second session?
30 minutes.
Would remain at 30, pending your motion? Okay. Any other board members have comment on that?
I just want the record to show that there's definitely more than 50 people here.[333.72][333.72](APPLAUSE).
It's hard for us to see on the Zoom.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, you know, our board members remotely can't see. But in any event, I guess we should have a roll call. So as I understand the motion, it is to extend the public comment, the first public comment for one hour, and to leave the second comment, period, undisturbed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, Ms. Zino.
Yes. Mr. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Emelo?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kulakortis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Mariani?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So that leads me to my board president's report. At the last board meeting on June 29, three agenda items did not pass concerning the elimination of CarePlus, a mental health service provider for, at that time, was described approximately 12 students, and the expansion of services by a company called Thrive for approximately up to, what was described at that time, 38 students, depending on the finalization of their IEPs, as was described in a committee meeting on July 20. In addition, there was on the agenda an item for the board to consider a new contract with CareSalus, a company we had not, as a district, done business with before, and a contract with a separate company called Thrive, as I previously described. CareSalus was a relatively new company, which houses a web-based navigation system to assist its school district clients and the district's students and parents in locating and connecting with mental health treatment providers. Thrive is a company which, according to the proposed contract, provides counseling, lunchroom, and classroom observations, and, among other things, attendance at IEP meetings. These agenda items were presented to the board earlier in the day, on Thursday, July 20, in the board agenda and packet released to the board. However, there was a committee meeting that same night to complete the committee's discussions concerning these three matters, which were amongst 18 agenda items with approximately 26 attachments. Board members had questions and concerns, which were articulated at the committee level and then at the board level in the days following. However, email is not the best form of communication, and there was no opportunity to resolve board members' inquiries and questions prior to the board meeting. Following the vote, the board had been provided with additional information via email but has not yet had the benefit of a committee meeting, such that this information could be discussed and then moved up to the board level, as is our practice. I regret that this has not happened, and it was not my desire for board decisions to be made via email. It is still not my preference. It is important to note, our administration tells us the district has considerable resources for mental health that range from nurses, school psychologists, guidance counselors, aides, learning specialists, full-time teachers of special education students, general education student teachers, school assistants, counselors, social workers, administration, and staff who are trained in mental health. We have lead administrators in both buildings for special education and on a district level. These services are available generally to our 2,000 students. Notwithstanding that, since January of 2023, the board also approved a free tuition program for teachers to become special education teachers and for additional hours for new programs for classroom instruction with specially structured courses this year. We approved sports supports for teachers and staff to attend conferences on mental health. A back-of-the-envelope calculation revealed millions of dollars in funds towards supporting the mental health and special education needs of our students that have been approved since January of 2023. I cannot recall a single item for mental health this board has not supported since January of 2023, other than the tie vote of last Monday. Having failed to convince the committee chair to have an emergency committee meeting, I called a meeting on Wednesday, July 26, the morning after, regarding the emailed information so that the board could consider these three agenda items. However, unbeknownst to me, a board member had circulated a petition to call this meeting today and sent the petition to the board secretary without my knowledge. Regrettably, I still have not seen that request, but it doesn't matter. Here we are. I would have called the meeting anyway, all of us willing and able, volunteers sitting here in front of you to reconsider the matter. I am still receiving information concerning these agenda items. There is simply not enough time to digest this information in an informed and measured way. I received emails, actually, as I was driving over here tonight, and, regrettably, I still have not had a chance to really fully digest it. I believe there may be some misinformation out there in the public, which the public thinks that all mental health services at the district are eliminated. This is false. Based on the latest email I received from administration, about 38 students may be qualified by Thrive to receive counseling, with perhaps another 12 or more to potentially participate in counseling over the course of the coming academic year. I do not, I want to be clear that I do not believe any board member, all nine of us, would ever suspend mental services, which importantly cannot be put into place until an IEP is formulated or a decision is made with respect to the two Thrive counseling, well, actually, it's one Thrive contract, abruptly. I don't believe any of the nine of us would do that. I certainly didn't, it certainly didn't help when board members, unfortunately, and I'm sure they'll speak on this, gave interviews to the news media, which led to more confusion in the community. At the June 29 meeting, the board approved each and every item, for example, of the roughly 17 outside vendors administration asked us to support to, to mental health, special education needs for students, I know, because I go in and sign these contracts after every board member, meeting. However, we got here, and we got here now. In my opinion, it's likely these items are going to pass tonight. We, of course, will hear your comments with board policy and with, consistent with our rules. And thank you for coming. That is all I have for the board president's report. Next item is the superintendent's report.
As your superintendent of schools, I want to take this opportunity to share my thoughts and respond to events that transpired over the past week. Tonight, the board is here to revisit agenda items that support our students' social, emotional safety, well-being, and education. For me, the past week has been filled with deep contemplation on how best to lead the district through these recent events while maintaining our focus on our core mission of addressing the needs of our students. I would like to extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation to our guidance counselors, child study team members, supervisors, administrators, and support staff for their partnership this past week, helping calm and reassure our parents. Over the past decade, the Sage Thrive program has been a pillar of support for our students, addressing their mental health needs and ensuring they have the tools to succeed both academically and emotionally. This program has been approved by the board in recent years, and it has provided essential services. Our school district implements a multi-tier of support services for our students dealing with mental health. The three agenda items this evening, E7, E8, and E11, support those tiers of support. The Thrive Counseling Program is what we call a Tier 3 program. Our students, many of whom have various needs and challenging issues, rely on these services provided by the Thrive program to access the curriculum and to reach their fullest potential. These services have positively impacted the lives of many, supporting approximately 43 students in the previous school year, and it is projected to assist around 56 students in the coming year. Over the past several years, Ramapo Indian Hills Regional engaged with two clinicians from Sage Thrive to support our students' existing needs. When I arrived as your superintendent of schools in 2021, it was clearly evident at that time that the recent pandemic had a significant impact on our students. In order to address our students' needs, we determined it was necessary to partner with a third-party provider called CarePlus to provide an additional clinician to support the growing mental health needs of our students. As a result, the two existing Sage Thrive clinicians, and in addition, the one CarePlus clinician, represented a total of three district staff members to support our special education and general education students. For this upcoming school year, the recommendation that was moved forward was to continue with three total clinicians provided solely through Sage Thrive for the district. This decision was based on the successful relationship and experiences we have had with Sage Thrive over a decade, improving oversight and efficiencies within our program, resulting in additional savings to the district, while most importantly, enhancing the services to address our students' needs. The administration discussed the recommendations of the Sage Thrive program in the Education and Personnel Committee over two months. In June and July of this year, we responded to board committee members' questions and comments, and we followed up in consultation with board legal counsel. The Bush Law Group, as our board counsel at the time, worked on the Sage Thrive contracts throughout the month of June for a total of 8.3 hours. Board counsel thoroughly reviewed the draft contracts, making revisions to ensure that the agreements comport with the law, ultimately approving the contract before it was shared with the Education and Personnel Committee in July. The Education and Personnel Committee discussed this resolution item, and as a result, the committee supported moving this program forward to the full board for approval, which was shared in the board packet the week before July 24. I have previously expressed to the board in earnest that I am gravely concerned that not approving the Sage Thrive E7 resolution will adversely affect a cross-section of our students who deserve and are entitled to receive a free and appropriate education, public education in the least restrictive environment, right here in Ramapo Indian Hills The repercussions of terminating funding for this program will extend beyond the social, emotional, and mental health needs of these students, impacting their academic progress as well as the overall school culture and climate, and a significant impact to our out-of-district placements in an unbudgeted, unanticipated impact to school budget, creating significant fiscal constraint for the district. We are the stewards of our students' future, and we are obligated to ensure they have access to the support and services they need to grow and thrive. Resolution E8 is a recommendation that would provide school-based mental wellness training, coaching, and certification through Sage Thrive. The Thrive Certification Program is designed to supplement our Tier 1 and Tier 2 support services. These tiers of support entail direct interventions by a school counselor, a SAC, or a child study team member. This certification will enable our staff to utilize training in order to meet the needs of students who are in crisis or suffering distress in their day. This proactive approach and training enables our school-based mental health personnel to learn the skill sets necessary to recognize the early signs in order to reduce the manifestation that occurs over time when students experience a crisis but do not speak up or seek treatment. This advanced level of training that our school staff will receive from Sage Thrive will assist students with mental health concerns that impact learning and their availability to receive education. This certification will be funded with ESER federal funds for the 2324 school year. This agreement was reviewed and approved by board counsel. The Education and Personnel Committee discussed this resolution item in June and July and supported moving this program forward to the full board for approval. Our teacher's ability to educate is intimately connected to the emotional well-being of our students. Resolution E11 is a recommendation for board approval of CareSalus, which is a digital platform designed to simplify and streamline the process for parents to access mental health and wellness services, if they so choose. Participation in this program is entirely voluntary, and the parents have the ability to determine if they want to participate. If a parent does not want to participate, then they simply do not participate. CareSalus is a comprehensive solution that connects individuals, families, and organizations with a vast network of providers, making it easier than ever to find the care and support needed. Families in crisis and need have a single point of contact to support them if they choose to participate. The administration invited the CareSalus Regional Director to provide a presentation at the Education and Personnel Committee meeting in July and to answer any questions. The Bush Law Group, as board counsel at the time, worked on the CareSalus contract throughout the month of June for a total of 6.6 hours, ensuring the agreements comport with the law and that parents have the ability to self-direct. The Education and Personnel Committee discussed this resolution item and supported moving this program forward to the full board for approval. Our commitment to mental health wellness fosters a proactive, compassionate, and informed approach to mental health and well-being that benefits our students, staff, and the entire school community. By prioritizing mental wellness, we can lay the groundwork for a healthier, more resilient, and successful learning environment that will have a lasting impact on our students for years to come.[1328.09][1328.09](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much.
I have more, Ms. Sullivan.
I'm sorry.
Challenges, while difficult, also present opportunities for growth and progress. As your superintendent of schools, my priority and commitment will always be the welfare of our students. I sincerely hope that we can find a way forward that ensures the needs of our students and families are met. Together, we can build a brighter future for our students, a future where mental health needs are adequately addressed, and every student can thrive. Thank you.[1367.53][1367.53](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. I'm assuming that Ms. Zino does not have a business administrator's report tonight? Is that correct?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you so much. And we do not have any board committee reports? Is that correct, board?
That is correct.
Thank you so much. All right. That leads us to public comment. Before I call for a motion, could I just ask that we show some restraint in voice or clapping just to keep the meeting efficient and running in order from either side of the agenda on these items? If you could just allow the speakers to continue to move forward quickly so we can get to everybody. Thank you. All right. So can I have a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bogdansky.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mariani. Should I get that to her?
Yes.
All right. So we'll do a vote on that.
My name is Greta Goodman.
I'm sorry. Were we going to do a vote on that? I'm sorry.
So sorry.
It was moved by Mr. Bogdansky and seconded by Ms. Mariani. Mr. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Emelo?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kulakortis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Mariani?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. I apologize.
That's all right.
So if you could say your name and...
My name is Greta Goodman, and I have lived in Oakland for more than 40 years. My son Andrew graduated...
I'm so sorry, but her microphone is not working. Maybe she just...
I don't know how to pull it down closer to your mouth, maybe.
Is the mic supposed to be red or green?
Just say testing.
Testing.
Okay. That's better. Thank you.
My name is Greta Goodman, and I have lived in Oakland for more than 40 years. My son Andrew graduated Indian Hills in 2001, and my son Mark graduated Indian Hills in 2003. My sons attended Indian Hills when the students had no choice of schools. I was on the university program committee to equalize Indian Hills and Ramapo. I coached track and cross country at Indian Hills for many years. I have a master's in education and a New Jersey teaching certification. I taught in both public and private schools in New Jersey. Presently, I am a substitute teacher, and I work in many schools, including Indian Hills and Ramapo. I am 72 years old and graduated from Bayonne High School more than 50 years ago. I started elementary school when there were only 48 states. I saw the American flag changed twice, to include Alaska and Hawaii. I went to elementary school when students, including me, were forced to read from parts of the Bible that their families did not believe in. There was no such thing as special education. These students failed at school, many students who could not learn in traditional ways or are not helped and called dumb. There was no such thing as special education. These students failed at school and had mental health issues. The members of the board can only read about these cases, but I lived them. Luckily, I was a good learner, and I did well in school, but I still remember the faces of these special needs students, and that was more than 60 years ago. I've been in public education for more than 50, 35 years, and I'm still in public education. I have seen a change for the better, helping those learners who need more or different type of help. Today's high school students have lived through the worst years because of COVID, and they have come through the worst ordeal in modern history, schools being opened and closed, remote learning. I taught in Hackensack Middle School through COVID and remote learning. It was difficult and especially challenging for students. Most survived, but some did not, and now those middle school students are now high school students. The federal government is expanding treatment for mental health, but Ramapo Indian Hills is weakening it. I was fortunate my sons were successful high school students. I am happy if your son or daughter is a successful student. Many students at Ramapo Indian Hills are suffering, as are high school students throughout the country and the world. Now, the parents' rights voted against expanding mental health issues and help for special needs students. This student population is the most vulnerable and needs more help, not less. I agree with the superintendent, the parents' rights is taking the district backwards. We live in New Jersey, not Florida, not Texas. New Jersey is ranked third in the nation in the United States. I don't have any children in high school district now. I am here for all the other high school students who depend on you, the board, to create the best learning and health environment that each one of them deserves. Please approve E7, E8, and E11 to ensure Ramapo Indian Hills High School continues to thrive and provide the best education it can for all high school students. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1681.25][1681.25](APPLAUSE). If you could hold your applause, please hold your applause so we can move swiftly through. Please hold your applause.
Thank you. Delamina LaForgia, Oakland. Let's talk about mental health because from my perspective, one student harm is one too many. In 2021, my brave son came to speak at the board meeting. He shared his difficult journey with the district, and Thrive program was in place. Afterwards, many people, many kind people contacted me and told me how remarkable my son was, he is, and how sorry they were for the district's emotional, educational, social, emotional failures. But sadly, you know who didn't say a thing? Not an inquiry, not what happened, not how can we improve this for other kids? My peers, Vivian Yun-King and Helen Kulakortis.
Audience, I must insist that you do not make comments. Please add five seconds on her clock.
It's unfortunate that this is a mental health setting. Anyway, now they want to proclaim that they care about mental health for all students. It's disheartening, it's disingenuous, and worse, it's put in place to serve Vivian Yun-King's political agenda. This is specific for Mrs. King, but it's for all to heed. Stop using our kids for political reelection agendas. I must also emphasize that its students' privacy is paramount. By the engagements on social medias that I have encountered, it is clear that a board member or some... member or some board members have betrayed the confidentiality of my son's case and have propagated false information and allegations, further harming an already fragile situation. This too must stop, but first let me correct the narrative. As a pro se, that means I represented myself, no easy feat, I went to due process and won my case against district lawyers Eric Harrison and Mr. Fogarty. Except there is no winning in due process. Everyone loses, mostly the students. Hence, I am a staunch parental rights advocate, because I truly believe I know what's best for my child, and I'm pretty sure that most of this crowd believes the same. I'm going to run out of time. Now, mental health last meeting, Tom Bogdansky stated that out-of-district Care Plus, a nonprofit medical model, third-party provider... I'm going to run out of time.
I can't see the timer, unfortunately.
Mary Lardier, Oakland. With permission from my daughter, a rising sophomore who's here at Indian Hills, I'm sharing her experience with the Thrive program this year. My daughter presented suicidal ideations in school, and with the swift action of her teachers and case manager, I was notified and we agreed that she be recommended to the Thrive program. My daughter, like 15% of other students in the U.S., has an IEP because she struggles with academic challenges. Thrive acts as a resource that supports students who need a place to regulate so they can succeed academically. When my daughter continued to struggle with her mental health, the Thrive counselor referred her to an outpatient facility to receive more intensive treatment. Throughout the process, the Thrive program was instrumental in helping her continue her academics while getting the services and care she needed, as well as prepared and supported her through the school reentry process. Even with all these struggles, my daughter still managed to earn honor roll for each marking period, and I believe this is because Thrive supported her academics. The communication that Thrive maintains between counselor and myself has been transparent and fluid. Without Thrive, I'm not confident she will receive the counseling that is part of her IEP, which would require out-of-district placement, a huge cost to taxpayers. How will the district offer these services? What plan is in place to provide children with the counseling services that is mandated in their IEP? In regards to those who fear that the school is becoming a mental health facility, I think this speaks volumes on how disconnected those who voted against maintaining this program are from the current condition of our youth. Currently, 1 in 6 students aged 10 to 19 experience a mental health condition, most often anxiety, depression, self-harm. Among children between 15 and 19, suicide is the second-leading cause of death, and the leading cause of death, 14- to 15-year-olds, according to the CDC. At this point, it should become no surprise to anyone that our children and teens are experiencing overwhelming issues related to mental health, and the numbers are only increasing over time. For any educational system to ignore these facts is negligent. Imagine laying awake at night, wondering if you should be hiding the knives in your kitchen because you're worried your daughter may harm themselves, and having to drop her off at school every day, thinking, how in the world is she going to sit through classes with these deep, dark thoughts running through her mind with no place to go? Thrive gave her a place to go when she needed and gave me a peace of mind knowing that she was safe at school. It's important to note that the Flow District is also working on each becoming stigma-free. By cutting the Thrive program, you're not only conveying to the community that mental health is not important at a time when it so clearly is, but also communicating that students with special needs are not important or worthy of support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Move quickly to the next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Paro Underfer Franklin Lakes. I'm reading this on behalf of a Franklin Lakes family.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Underfer, I cannot hear you.
I'm Paro Underfer Franklin Lakes. I'm reading this on behalf of a Franklin Lakes family. We are the parents of a rising senior whose academic success greatly depends on a Thrive program. Our son transferred from Indian Hills to Ramapo in the beginning of his sophomore year after struggling through remote learning, having social, emotional difficulties all his life. The more... I'm sorry. The move was not an easy one. He greatly relied on his guidance counselor, student assistant counselor, and case manager for emotional support. It was only after his case manager decided that she was unable to support his emotional needs herself that she referred him to the Thrive program as a last resort. Had our son not had access to the Thrive program, we would have been forced to seek an out-of-district placement that likely would cost upwards of $100,000 per year, and the district would be forced to pay for it. How many other kids... I'm sorry. How many other kids in the program would be in the same boat? At a cost of $430,000 per year, the program would only have to keep approximately five students from being placed out-of-district in order to be cost-effective. Like most parents, we didn't even know Thrive existed before this recommendation, but within a few short weeks, our son's attitude finally started to change. He began to learn the coping skills needed to make it through the day, skills most kids come by naturally. It took a lot of work, but Ms. Elizabeth Mullin, our son's Thrive therapist, was eventually able to provide him with the tools and the environment he needed. Over the past two years, she has become a rock for our son. Our boy, with very few friends, now has a confidant in the building on whom he can always rely, and now that is being threatened. One board member explained that there was a proposal to add a third Thrive therapist, and that was a reason why she voted against it. But the third therapist for $60,000 per year was a separate agenda item. Why did the entire program get voted against? And if there were additional questions or concern, why did the vote even happen that night? Why were the superintendents and other board members blindsided by the no votes rather than having a discussion to learn more about how critical Thrive program is to many students? While explaining their decision last week, one board member said the focus should be on, quote, "student achievement and getting all kids to be graduate-ready," end of quote. I'd like to thank that board member, because for some students...
So sorry.
That's okay.
Next speaker.
My name is Vicki Holst. I am a resident and parent in Franklin Lakes, and I am going to continue reading the letter that Ms. Underfer started from the anonymous family in Franklin Lakes. I'm going to restart at the beginning of that last paragraph. While explaining their decision last week, one board member said the focus should be on, quote, "student achievement and getting all kids to be graduation-ready," end quote. I'd like to thank that board member, because for some students, they are actually describing Thrive. Our child doesn't need a wheelchair ramp in the school, he won't be using the new turf for the soccer or football field, and he doesn't need a new instrument for jazz band. But he would never dream of taking these things... But we would never dream of taking these things away from the students who do need them. We also never dreamed that we would have to publicly disclose that our son had these issues, especially in order to get him the help he needs. And while these days, mental health, quote-unquote, "safe spaces," quote-unquote, and emotional stability, quote-unquote, have become buzzwords turned against certain groups, but make no mistake about it, this is not a political issue. It is a simple matter of helping kids who need it, kids who have conditions like ADHD, autism, anxiety disorders, and depression, and whose pervasive disabilities and needs often go beyond the scope of a school nurse, school psychologist, guidance counselor, case manager, or student assistance counselor. It is a matter of making the school a better place for all students. By not approving funding for this program, you are targeting an overlooked and at-risk portion of the student body, one that deserves to thrive just as much as any other. And that is the end of the comments from the anonymous family in Franklin Lakes.
Thank you so much.
Since I do still have a couple... I did have like a minute and 20 left. I'm just going to make a quick statement of my own. Vicki Holst, Franklin Lakes. As a former trustee of the Franklin Lakes Board of Education, I would like to add that in part because of the success of the Sage Thrive program at Ramapo Indian Hills, Franklin Lakes Public Schools started contracting with Sage Thrive in recent years. The professionals from Sage Thrive haven't simply attended one professional development course or taken a college course on mental wellness or executive functioning, in addition to training as teachers, like our staff already does. The Sage Thrive professionals are solely trained to support all students with needs far beyond the everyday scope that a high school teacher would be expected to address, or even a high school counselor. Working with Sage Thrive does not negate the training our staff receives, it provides an additional support to our staff. Our staff deserve it, the students deserve it, the families deserve it, because our students need it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Maddie. I'm 15 years old, and I was in Thrive. I say "was" because the Thrive program no longer is running. Because of the ignorance of the school board, they've decided that it isn't their problem to care for kids' health. According to their message towards my mom, the school is irresponsible for students' mental health. You can say that it's not your responsibility all you want, but guess what? It is. We are here most of the year, and some of us spent the majority of our lives in this building, and it's absurd that you think it's not your issue when we are here most of the time. Not to mention, school is one of the leading causes for students declining mental health. Do you understand that? Do you know how school makes kids feel? For me, school used to make me feel anxious and afraid. Most days, I would wonder about what I should do and how to harm myself because of my suicidal ideation. I could barely last a day in the building. Thrive saved me from the stress of that. You could also... You have also stated your reasoning for believing that mental health isn't your responsibility because you think the parents should be there for the students, and said, although you are right, and parents should be there for kids, especially their own, it is naive for you to assume that all parents will be there for their children. Many children have parents that don't care about how they feel, whether it's because they value grades over their health, they're emotionally negligent, or maybe even a combo of both, amongst other reasons. Having outlets where students can find safety and shelter is important. Thrive saved my life and is probably going to continue to save lives if you continue to fund the program, so please reconsider your asinine decision and put it back.
Okay, let's move on to the next speaker. We don't want to run out of time.
My name is Lindsay Roman. I'm in Wykoff, and I'm going to yield my first five seconds to give additional applause to this young lady. And thank you to the board for having this hearing to reconsider and for being here and being on the board. It's an important job, and I know it's not always easy, and I really want to encourage you to reconsider your vote in favor of these critical mental health services. I'm really struggling to understand how you can overlook the proven benefit of mental health of students in schools, even though there is extensive, peer-reviewed, public research. And Ms. Sullivan, I hear what you said in your opening comments about how every single one of you would support mental health, but as the young lady just said, comments have been made that it's not your responsibility, and I believe last week, comments were made that this is an overreach, and it was likened to seeing a dentist, that if you had a bad tooth, you would go to the dentist, so I'm not quite sure that statement resonates with the many people who heard that said. And so since there's a misunderstanding of what mental health means and is, I'll cite some of that peer-reviewed research for you. 1 in 6 youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder. These include ADHD, behavior problems, anxiety, depression, most commonly diagnosed. Undiagnosed, untreated, inadequately treated mental illnesses can significantly interfere with a student's ability to learn, grow, and develop. Since children spend so much of their productive time in educational settings, schools offer a unique opportunity for early identification, prevention, and interventions that serve students where they already are. And since mental health was likened to dental care, you should be aware that the wait to see a private mental health practitioner is upwards of six months, and 70% of children in the U.S. who seek and receive mental health receive it at school. Look, as parents, all of us agree that parents have a right, and parents should have, say, parental rights, I don't know, it doesn't matter, we all care. But please don't let the next generation suffer because a handful of your most vocal supporters are likening mental health care to conspiracy theories about trans cults, because that's what's being said online. In fact, somebody said they'd rather their kid be dead. So if this doesn't pass, that's your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Tree, an upcoming junior at Indian Hills High School. I typically am not one to watch or rather attend Board of Education meetings, yet I'm standing before you this evening, confronting you on how to actually represent the students, parents, teachers, and people who are the reason for the existence of this school district and your job. If this does not grasp your attention to the current issues plaguing our school district, then I do not know what else will. Rather than repairing and improving all the issues within our school, our school budget has prioritized newer laptops. This overshadows the lack of locker rooms for our sports teams, new uniforms for our marching band, healthier options in our lunch menu, fixing our bathrooms, and better mental health support, which is now partly canceled without the approval and agreement of the Flow community. Remember that as the Board of Education, you are obligated to represent and support us students. If parents want the district to continue to provide mental health support while their children are sent to school and out of their control, then you are obligated to fund and provide it fully, as it is your job to represent and help us students. This is explicit parental consent. I cannot believe how I, an upcoming junior, must explain why providing the Thrive program does not make Indian Hills or Ramapo High School a, quote, "psychiatric institution," unquote, or how by doing so, we are not, quote, "focusing too much on mental health," unquote. Paramus, Ridgewood, Northern Highlands, and universities all provide mental health programs to their students. In a time where mental health is more important than ever, you as board members, removing access to professional help from CarePlus and access to CareSolus website is absolutely ludicrous. If you truly claim and desire, quote, "preparing students for graduation," unquote, I would not have to come up to this podium to tell you that by canceling access to the Thrive program, students cannot and will not succeed as mental health plays a crucial role in a student's academic success. If you truly, quote, "support," unquote, Ramapo Indian Hills students, then you will listen to your community, and then you will take appropriate action that extends beyond the goals of this meeting, not simply acknowledging my speech and dismissing me soon afterward. Thank you, and I would now like to transition to my friend, who will dive deeper as to why we need to provide the Thrive program.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Alexa Muro, an upcoming junior at Indian Hills. I usually don't speak at events like these, but on July 25th, I was shocked to get a link from my friend to a livestreamed Board of Education meeting, ending certain mental health programs in our district, such as the Thrive program. I'm surprised this was even up for discussion, especially at this point in our generation where mental health is one of the leading causes of deaths in teens. And not to mention that school shootings are frequent now in the U.S. School shootings aren't necessarily inevitable, nor can they be controlled by the school, but providing a reliable support system can be helpful to students. If students had somewhere to go when they feel stressed during school and can talk about how they feel or even just sit there to get away from all the stress, that would help that student immensely. People should not feel like they have no one to talk to and that they don't have a way... People should not feel like they have no one to talk to, and that they don't have a way out of what they are feeling. You obviously do not understand about, you obviously do not understand what people dealing with mental health issues go through, because if you did, this wouldn't be a topic of discussion. And you would realize that teens can't just deal with this themselves, or talk to their parents about this. This goes into another issue that concerned me, when you guys said that students can't just go to their parents about this, and this can be a parent's responsibility. This is a terrible misconception. First of all, most teens, or practically anyone who deals with mental health, do not want help. And if they do, they find it troubling to go to their parents and tell them how they feel. It's not as easy as everyone thinks it is. And when a teen does tell their parents, we cannot assume that their parents will be well-equipped enough to know how to handle what their child's going through. I'd like to note that in many cultures and even generations, mental health is looked down upon, considered quote unquote not a real problem, and just plain ignored. For some to go, for some, to go to someone about this within their family isn't even an option, it isn't even a thought that crosses their mind. It would be very helpful for a parent or teen to go on the school website and get information about seeking help. Instead of focusing on graduating quote unquote, I think you should put mental health programs as a top priority if you want teens to even be able to graduate. Instead of prioritizing new laptops and other things that we don't need for another year or so, you should focus on providing reliable and effective mental health programs, so students will feel prepared for and after graduation as they start their lives as young adults.
Thank you so much.
I think we should take a closer look at what happened last week and why we're here now. I think we need to change the trend. Board members, try your hardest to remember why you have been elected. You are elected to represent the students and the community. Please try to detach yourselves from your own personal agendas and work together as one board to do-
Could you please not interrupt the speaker? Please.
To do what's best for the students. And to the community, you're not helping your board when you too expect certain responses from board members that don't align with your own agenda or views. A broken board is never going to be able to function to its full capacity if we work this way. I am a supporter of parents' rights, so don't boo me, but I recognize that every decision cannot possibly be black or white. Life is not that simple. So this mental health and wellness is not, you really can't say it's only the parent's responsibility. Why has the government implemented social services? Do we turn our backs on the children that deal with different things at home that they're not being helped on? This is part of our responsibility, takes a village. As a society, we don't do that, we don't turn our backs to children that are being abused or are starving at home. The schools help the children that are starving. There will always be a gray area where you need to really reflect and say, my allegiance is to no one, I am not part of a group on the board, I'm doing what's right. The members who voted no have every right to their vote. However, I would like to say in this case, careful thought should have been given, and the superintendent and the committee chair should have been given a heads-up on the move, so alternatives could have been made or suggested. I do want to echo what this young student said, because my parents were first generation in the United States, and I, like I've mentioned before, we went to, I went to Sycamore, my siblings all did, I graduated Ramapo. I would have been that child who would not have received that help, because if my parents recognized it, they wouldn't know what to do, they wouldn't know where to go, they wouldn't know what, who to ask. So I, you know, I think everyone here shows that we need this program in our schools, and we need to be there for our students.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Amy Eiler, Oakland. The Ramapo Indian Hills community is not immune from mental health crises. We all wish for a world where our students possess innate successful navigation of themselves, the interpersonal relationships, the world, but they don't know, they don't. This quality is not inherent. Experience and guidance through these experiences are paramount to successful development in this regard. Life is complex, and many related issues come about before students are capable of handling these issues with the full skill set necessary to jump these hurdles. As we all know, some of these problems are adult in nature and require more tools than the student may possess. When students are stripped of mental health services, they may feel helpless, and consequently hopeless. The scholastic world is a mental one, and with this being so, the mental well-being of our students is our responsibility. It's ensuring access to mental health services that saves each one's student's life. These students are, these services are worth it. Again, if it saves one student's life, these services are worth it. Vote for kindness, acceptance, understanding, empathy, patience. May we always strive to not pass judgment, to care about each other, offer a smile, show grace. For this reason, among others, it is absolutely necessary that mental health services remain present in our schools. I would like to end with a quote. "It was only a sunny smile and little it cost for the giving, but like morning light, it scattered the night and made the day worth living." S. Scott Fitzgerald. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, my name is Erica Cowe, I've lived in Wyckoff for thirteen years, and I have two daughters, one in third and one in sixth. I'm a licensed social worker and a psychotherapist with a resolution counseling center in Bloomfield. Mental health services among New Jersey residents are in tremendously high demand. As I read this, my center has a waitlist of approximately seven hundred people, more than two hundred of whom are young people between the ages of eight and seventeen. According to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the most important protective factor against suicide is access to mental health care. According to NJ.gov, suicide was the third-leading cause of death among New Jersey youth between the ages of ten and fourteen. According to the Trevor Report, forty percent of LGBTQ youth in New Jersey considered suicide within the past year and fourteen percent attempted suicide. Fifty-nine percent of LGBTQ youth in New Jersey who wanted mental health care in the past year were not able to get it. That's almost six out of ten children. Ensuring the presence of mental health services results in normalizing the utilization of mental health services. Eliminating them sends the very strong message that the biopsychosocial needs of these young people simply don't matter. Removing access to these programs may save the district money, but our youth will ultimately pay the price. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Zoe Paxos from Oakland. I went to Hills all four years for my high school, and I actually wrote a bunch of things down that I wanted to say, but first I want to start off by branching off of what some other people said.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What, did you hear up to?
I only heard your first name was Zoe.
Okay, so I'm Zoe Paxos, I'm from Oakland, yeah.
Yes, could you reverse the clock for her, Ms. Zeno?
So I'm Zoe Paxos, I'm from Oakland, and I went to Indian Hills for all four years of high school. I wrote a lot of things down that I wanted to say, but a lot of people up here have said some really good points, so I'm just going to start by branching off of that. But first off, I think it's utterly disgusting that this is even up for discussion. Why would you prioritize any other thing over the mental health of your students? If your job is to make decisions based on the best interest of the students in this district, why would you willingly and knowingly do something that would ultimately harm them in the long run, even short term? But why would you knowingly eliminate these programs that you know help people, that you know people need, that you know people to rely on? Like, I, okay, I have severe treatment-resistant depression, right? I can't just take a pill and have all my problems go away. I can't just take an antidepressant and be fine. I have a plethora of other things like that, but you cannot compare depression to having, like, a bad tooth and going to the dentist, or having a headache and taking Advil, it's not that simple. I've run out of every medication, I've done ketamine treatment, I've done, I've done things you can't even imagine. You cannot compare something as simple as a headache to something like depression. Another thing that I want to branch off of is that you guys said mental health of the students is not really your problem, that it should be the parents' problems. I can't do that, like, a lot of people here can't do that, other people said that. My father was abusive, I haven't seen him in years. When I came to him and I told him I was depressed, he didn't give a fuck, he didn't give a damn. I cannot go to him and have him help me if he doesn't care, if he's part of the reason why I am like this now. If I come to school and I say, hey, my daddy's abusing me, you guys are mandated reporters, right? Teachers are mandated reporters, anyone who works at a school? It is your problem, it is your problem. If something bad is going on in his life, it's your problem, it's your, it's your job to report that and to help care for that student, and to ultimately care for their mental health. If something that big is going on in their life, you need to care about what's happening. They're your students, it's not just something you can push to the side. You can't just say, hey, these people are different than us, and we don't know how to deal with it, so let's put them somewhere else and alienate them completely and make them feel worse than they already do. That is obscene to me. The amount of people I know, and including myself, like, I have a whole support system, I had a whole support system at Hills of, but to the nurses, the teachers, other people from the mental health programs, I had the CarePlus counselor, my guidance counselor, without them, I would not be here. I would not be alive, I would not have graduated high school, because I am not capable of doing that without the help of these people and these programs. I would not be standing here talking right now. If depression were something so easy to get rid of, I wouldn't have slit my wrists off my ear and tried to kill myself. You can't just pretend that this isn't going to prevent students from staying alive, you can't act like this isn't something that's important to the whole community, and there is a whole-
I'm so sorry. Ms. Zeno, Ms. Zeno, Ms. Zeno. I typically don't look at my text messages, I, I do not look at my text messages during a board meeting, but I kept getting dings, so I looked, and it was Ms. Anch who says that she is barely able to hear the speakers. Audience, please. Is there something that tech support can do to maybe address the inability of the Zoom participants to be able to speak? Dr. Dinesio?
Can you raise the volume on the public comment podium, please? Maybe that'll help the situation? Thank you.
So I would like to conduct a brief test with our next speaker, if she's willing.
Sure. Mary Ann Crinkoli, Wyckoff, New Jersey.
And could you just say a couple of sentences?
I'm a special education attorney and parent in this district.
Ms. Anch, Ms. Colacortes, is that getting any better? It's getting better? Oh, I'm sorry, let me just-
Yes, much better, thank you.
Okay, so you're able to proceed, my remote participants? You believe it's sufficient to proceed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Let's restart the clock.
My name is Mary Ann Crinkoli, I'm a parent in Wyckoff and a special education attorney for nearly thirty years. I practice education law and have represented public school districts. I now represent parents of the most fragile population of students, and have a particular expertise in handling cases involving students with emotional disabilities. I tell you this to just give you a little faith and confidence in what I'm about to say. There are fourteen categories of classification under which a student can be classified and receive an IEP. Of those categories, there is one reserved for students with emotional deficits. That's because federal and state law tell us that all public school districts are obligated to program for students with mental health issues when those issues adversely impact a student's educational performance. So special education is not just about academics, it's about any and all skills a child requires in order to be an independent, functioning member of the school community and beyond. It could include social skills, emotional skills, communication skills, learning skills, it could even include toileting skills, if that is what a child requires. These students, like all special needs students, are entitled to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. The least restrictive environment is defined as the school closest to home where progress, rather than regression or stagnation, take place. For most students, that is their home district. For students with disabilities, it really does depend on their needs and what the school district has to offer. If the district does not maintain its mental health program, the district is not absolved of its responsibility to program for these students, and will be compelled to look out of district at therapeutic day schools and even therapeutic residential schools, which could cost upwards of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year, per student, and they are one of the most restrictive learning environments. It is clear based on what the law requires and the sheer numbers that maintaining an effective mental health program is a must. It's also clear that the cost to maintain the Thrive program is de minimis as compared to what it would cost to send this entire fragile population of students out of a district. I implore you to delve deeper into your legal obligation to serve the mental health needs of our students, the impact of not being able to meet their needs, and to vote to maintain the Thrive program. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I am a parent, a psychologist, and an adjunct professor, and tonight I speak from all those perspectives. Many people came to speak tonight, so I'm going to speak quickly. I'm hopeful that if anything good can come of this debacle, it will be that our community, myself included, will pay closer attention and not remain silent.
Audience, please.
After watching the livestream from last week's meeting, I was disappointed and disheartened. I cannot imagine that in 2023, at a time when our students, locally, at a state level and nationally, are struggling with unprecedented rates of anxiety, depression, and other mental health disorders. We have members of the board who saw fit to vote down a resolution for a program that has successfully been serving the needs of our district for over a decade, leaving our administration less than six weeks to figure out an alternate plan, as we just heard, that will cost a lot more money. A few comments. The suggestion that it's easy to access mental health services is preposterous. Finding a therapist or a psychiatrist is not as easy as walking into a facility and making an appointment, as it was suggested last week. Most providers I know are turning down clients on a daily basis. Most people seeking treatment have to make numerous phone calls before anyone even returns their call, then gets put on a lengthy waiting list, and then they have to figure out how to afford the care. The idea that providing support for our students with mental health struggles is not the job of our schools, or that it's overreach, or that there's too much mental health, that was an interesting comment, is naive, uninformed, and unrealistic. For the past twenty-five years, I've taught an intro to psych class. While I happen to be a therapist, nowhere in my job requirement does it say that I have to be, but it surely comes in handy. I don't recall a single semester where a student has not approached me asking for help and support as they learn to navigate the first year of college, or a mental health disorder, or a crisis, or a myriad other stressors. I don't provide these students with treatment, but I very much consider these connections to be an integral part of what I do, and my blood boils when I hear people rant about how school should go back to reading, writing, and arithmetic. What a sad world that would be.
Audience.
I am sure that if we asked the teachers and staff in our district, have they ever been in a position to help someone outside the stated curriculum, I'm sure they could provide instances. Yet last week, we refused to fund training and certification, so they're better equipped to do their jobs in all the aspects. If we want to continue to have the qualified, passionate teachers that have long been a part of the Ramapo Indian Hills district, we have to do better and stop asking them to do things with their hands tied behind- to do things with their hands tied behind their backs.
Thank you so much.
Carla Rodriguez from Oakland. First and foremost, it is frustrating to hear the board refer to our mental health program as unnecessary and label our school a psychiatric institute. As a mother of seven children, I assure you, mental health is crucial, is a crucial aspect of a child's well-being, and it cannot, it cannot be ignored or dismissed. When my son was struggling with mental, with his mental health, I felt helpless. I didn't know how to help him or where to turn for support. It took months of searching and, and reaching out to find the appropriate therapy and resource for him. It took endless nights of tears and worries to get him to a place of comfort. Just when we were making progress, the pandemic hit and everything was disrupted. His therapists and psychologists could only see him through a Zoom link, his social group visits were canceled. During this time, my son's mental health deteriorated rapidly. He became withdrawn and unable to express his emotions. If asked about, about what he was feeling, he would immediately burst into tears. It came to a point where I feared for his life. To fear for once, for once, sorry, to fear for once, child's life isn't something any parent should go through. It was heart-wrenching to witness his pain. It was even more heart-wrenching not knowing how to alleviate it. It was time to head back into the schools and I felt helpless. Without the necessary resources, it felt like an uphill battle. I was unaware of our mental health program that sat all but a few steps away, and again, I had a battle with mental demons. When my other son struggled with one of his after-school activities, no child should be told he won't amount to anything, picked on and bullied by men over twice his age. He became withdrawn from school, his family, his friends. What he was going through affected his grades and his eating habits. Again, seeing one of my son's cry while I sat at the corner of his bed, helplessly holding onto him to try and alleviate some of the pain, but if it were only that easy to transfer over a children's pain, unfortunately, it is not. Once again, I had to fight those mental demons to help my son thrive. My boys are only the tip of the iceberg. I have dedicated countless hours of volunteer, volunteering in our school from programs VP, president, VMS, project graduation, you name it. Through all this, I have met the most wonderful people, but I have never shared my struggles until today. I am not the only parent that has expressed concerns or, or has shared their stories, as you all may already know. Most of us have recently become aware of these programs and shouldn't take that termination of these programs for, for some parents to learn of them. I have a 17, 15, 12, 5, 2-year-old that are all part of, part or will be part of our Oakland school system. My fear that these services won't be available to them if they were to ever need them. I implore the board to, to please reconsider their decision to reinstate these mental health programs.
Thank you so much.
Is this working?
Yeah, it is.
My name's Lisa Michaels, I've been a resident of Wyckoff since 1983, not including the 12 years of my post-high school education. I'm proud to say I'm a graduate of Ramapo High School. I earned my medical degree from, and I'm now in the assistant faculty of New Jersey Medical School, and I'm board certified by the American Board of Pediatrics and an active fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics. I tell you all of this to demonstrate to you how I have devoted my life to the well-being of children. Not just any children, but those of my community in which I was raised and in which I chose to raise my own kids. So I was shocked and disappointed to hear that a member of this board made a public comment stating that it is easy for our youth to find mental health services. In the 16 years that I've been practicing medicine in our community, I have been involved in the care of over 8,000 youth. My patients have private health insurance, and the overwhelming majority of them come from families with more than adequate resources. But I cannot emphasize to you enough the battle that I and all of the pediatricians in our community have been fighting and losing to get mental health services for our kids. There are only 17 child and adolescent psychiatrists for every 100,000 children in the state of New Jersey, but most of them don't accept health insurance, so the effective number is much, much lower. Between the barrier to getting care due to the stigma of mental health and the inability to find a psychiatrist who not only accepts insurance but is accepting new patients, we pediatricians are struggling in the trenches with very little ammunition left to fight this war. The National Alliance for Mental Illness recognizes that mental illness interferes with a child's ability to learn. They state that youth are almost as likely to receive mental health services in school as out. In 2019, 15% of students received services in school compared to similar, 17% of students who were able to see a specialist outside of school. Our students spend 40% to 60% of their waking hours at school. I know that you're all aware of the dramatic increase in mental illness in our youth that was already occurring prior to COVID, but only accelerated during and after the pandemic. We need all hands on deck. To remove the current mental health services without providing a replacement with no gap in care at this time would be indescribably irresponsible and absolutely baffling. In addition, as a taxpayer, I do not understand the logic in causing the huge increase in spending that will occur if these services are canceled or outsourced.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Mike Godisman, I'm the founder of the New Jersey Public Education Coalition. When I came into this meeting tonight, I listened very carefully to the superintendent's statement and to the statement of the board president. First, I'd like to thank the superintendent for presenting more detailed facts about this program, I think everyone in this room appreciated that. With regard to the board president's statement, I found it very interesting that she indicated she still didn't feel comfortable making a decision about the items on the agenda tonight because she didn't feel she had enough information. Yet a week ago, with less facts, the board president felt she had enough information to vote against these programs. For me...
Audience, please.
It's a simple question. First, it's a financial question, and every member of this board has the responsibility to do what is the best for this district financially. This district can't afford to outsource, not at a cost of $100,000 to $170,000 per student. If you have 56 students, that's potentially a $5.6 million-plus price tag. Second, members of this board have made this an issue of parental rights, a phrase we've heard a lot about over the past two years, a phrase that's politicized, and there's no denying that every parent has rights. But we have to recognize that it's every parent, not just a few, and that the parent whose children need these services should be able to avail themselves of the services in this district. If not, we're turning the clock back 75 years to a point where we warehoused students that needed special services. And that leads to the third issue, a decision that each and every one of you board members has to make, and that's, do you want your school district to merely give students equality in education, or do you want to give them equity? And you have to understand the difference. Equality means every student, regardless of their circumstance, gets the same thing. Equity means we look at every individual student's circumstances and do the best we can to make sure that they're set up to succeed in the world when they exit this school system. So you, as board members, have to decide, which is it going to be? Equality or equity? Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have about five minutes left. Two minutes? Two more speakers, thank you.
Marisol Kozlovsky, I'm from Oakland, New Jersey. I want to directly speak to Point E11, the Care Solace tool. As far as I can tell from what's been said here, it's a digital platform tool for parents to have access and another step to finding help for their students. This should absolutely be approved because we have more students in trouble than most people realize. My children are the opposite end of the spectrum from the Thrive program children. My children are overachieving students. My 13, my 14-year-old, pardon me, for her three years at middle school, whether it was COVID, partial COVID, or full in-class, got principals list every single quarter of her three, three years there. Girl scout, over-involved with MBS, doing whatever she could to help her community. And yet, we had a family tragedy over a year ago that devastated our entire family. We reached out to our children and we looked and said, do we need help? Do we need help, as involved parents often do? We did not know my girl needed help. The first sign parents are given to your child needing help is a drop in grades, my daughter did not have that. The second thing we are told is behavior changes. The only behavior change I saw in my, in my child was a 13-year-old who liked to hug me at night before going to bed. That is unusual, I know. I really didn't know my kid was having a problem until one day she was in English class and an assignment triggered her. Just a word, just a thought, grief does not turn off because you're in a building for eight hours a day. There is no shut-off when grief overtakes you. And my child broke publicly in front of her peers, eighth-grade boys. She broke. And I walked into that building and I found my daughter hysterically crying, broken and gasping, "I'm sorry, mommy, I'm sorry, mommy, I don't want to give you more problems." Because she's a good kid. She needed help. Her peers were not helpful, okay? Bullying starts, teasing starts, eighth-grade boys and girls. And her teachers were there, her counselors were there, every support system possible, and every single person that's come up to you and told you today, "It takes a lot more than walking in a building to get help," is absolutely speaking the truth. Months. Her father and I on the phone, on the email, any way we can, references from the school, 80% of them had shut down, COVID closed. Our insurance company gave us a long list of providers that no longer took that insurance. Months, it took us months, and nine months later, she now has the help she needed. But we were involved, parents, God help the poor kids that fall between the cracks, that weren't found, and that need these kind of services and assistance, please approve Care Solace...
Thank you so much.
...so parents have one more tool.
Thank you so much. We only have room for one more speaker. You're the last speaker.
Okay. Beth Sperozic, I'm from Wyckoff. I'm a little jumbled, so bear with me, but I do have some questions. I realize that the budget was, and I don't have children in the school system as of now. The budget was presented in April, and that budget I see Thrive is in there, and I'm wondering what happened between April and now. Where's that money going that you already budgeted, because I'm a little confused? I wrote it on a budget, the budget comes through, there's money on the line, so I'm not understanding what the problem is at this point, but I would like to know where that money is going to go. So if anybody can get back to me, bsparrow@me.com, that would be lovely. A board member said that, and I'm paraphrasing, that parents need to be more involved with their children's lives. Think back to your childhood, did your parents get involved all the time when you had issues? My, my, my question is, is would you have gone to your mom or your dad, and which one would you have chosen? Because that's another question that the kids have, because they don't want to be a problem with all the things that are going on and loss of jobs and everything else that the parents are going through, the kids just don't want to add to it. So where do they go? I'm just curious. I'm sitting here and I'm listening to the students, and my heart goes out to them. And I don't, not, I don't suffer from depression, but I am a parent of children that do. I cannot imagine that you cannot feel for these students or the parents that spoke tonight. Do not understand, I do not understand how you can vote no, and do not understand that you don't get the importance of continuing these programs after listening to these children. I sat here and I cried. I don't even know these children. I know what my children went through, but I don't know these children, and they spoke so eloquently. I thought, when I voted you guys in, that you were voting for the people and the students, and that you're here to take care of those students. Well, if there's only 30 students in this program, and these students are already speaking, I'm going to say that they're going to represent a quarter of the students, maybe, that are saying that they need it, so how can you vote no? I just don't understand, and maybe next November, whenever we vote, we're going to have to seriously consider, because you people don't stand for us, you just don't.
Thank you so much. If that ends our, need a motion to close public comment? Motion to close, anyone? Need a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bogdansky, I need a second.
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 On the motion to close public comments, Mr. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Emelo?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Colacortes?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Maryanni?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Public comments are closed.
Thank you. All right. We have open board discussion now on the three agenda items. Anyone have any comments, questions?
Ms. Sullivan, I'd like to be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Bogdansky, certainly.
Thank you. First, I want to say that I'm honored to chair the Education and Personnel Committee. I want to thank all the parents that emailed the board regarding their personal experiences. I was overwhelmed with emotion, and each email had a profound, excuse me, had a profound impact on me. To share personal and sensitive information in order to fight for this program makes me more confident that this program is vital for all students.
I ask you to hold your applause. We do have a board policy that requests that we not, I'm trying to keep an orderly operation of the meeting, and I would like to give Mr. Bogdansky an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that all students deserve the best education we can offer, and I have said repeatedly that serving students with special needs is at the top of my list. We must care for all our students in inclusive, productive, and welcoming environment. I will offer all I can as chair of the committee to provide as many resources needed to our students. We owe it to all our students, not just a few. If you feel we are lacking in any area or you want to offer feedback, please contact this board at any time. I was shocked and saddened at the vote last week to not extend a 12-year program that plays a role in helping students who are struggling with mental health and well-being. We are making great progress in these areas, addressing issues that hinder a child from excelling academically, as spelled out in the Plessis Report. Concern was raised at the last meeting in regard to approximately 23% of students not being graduation-ready and performance levels not being as high. Mental health and wellness have a direct correlation to academic performance and success. There is a scientific proof that students who receive emotional, mental, and behavioral help in school perform better academically. The struggles we are discussing are usually detected by teachers at an early age. Our children are in school for eight-plus hours a day. For some, it's more time than they have, have to share with their parents. There are various scenarios why a parent may not recognize these struggles or address them because of perceived stigma attached to it. So, let's welcome these programs and support the professionals who work with our students on a daily basis. I want to personally... I want to personally thank Dr. Dionisio and Dr. Moriello for spending hours answering over two dozen questions for the board regarding this program. Dr. Moriello, I may add, was on vacation with his family at the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have questions, comments? Dr. Lorenz, do you wish to be recognized?
Thank you. I want to thank the parents, teachers, students, and community members for coming out tonight. And I want to thank you for showing this community does not support the decision made by four members of the board at the last meeting. I want to express my particular thanks to the courageous parents, teachers, students, and community members who shared their harrowing stories with the board and across social media and with the press. You are gallant, and your message truly shows that you put the students' health and well-being first. I also want to thank my fellow board members, who through this catastrophic decision have worked tirelessly to make this meeting happen, even though we have encountered countless attempts by some board members to cancel tonight. Mr. Delay, Ms. King, Mr. Bogdansky, and Ms. Kula-Cortis, thank you for protecting the students and ensuring that Dr. Dionisio --
Audience, could you please let Mr. Dr. Lorenz finish?
Thank you for protecting the students and ensuring that Dr. Dionisio and the faculty and staff can help our students. I never thought we'd find ourselves in a position where we had to protect the students from members of the board. Albert Einstein once said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them." This country, this state, and this community are in a mental health crisis. For us to think that the solution lies in cutting mental health programs is foolish and downright cruel. Einstein would certainly be disappointed. You might hear or have heard that some members of the board just needed more information on Thrive, and then they could make an informed vote. That's simply not true. And we know this because of what they said and how they voted at that last meeting. This was a vote that said, "There's too much mental health in our schools." That is a statement on values, and morals, and mantras, and do not let them rewrite their position. They showed us who they really are. To those who have created this debacle with your vote, I see you. We all see you. You have shown that your values, or lack thereof, do not align with those of the FLOW community. This is a community --
Oh, my gosh.
This is a community where empathy defeats ruthlessness, where understanding defeats incomprehension, and where kindness overcomes every attempt at interference. What you all did last week was unforgivable. Your latest attempts to blame others for your despicable decision doesn't erase what you did, but rather shows that even when given a chance to admit your mistake and apologize to the community for your callousness, you double down. People are here because of your vote. People are upset because of your vote. They are not upset at anyone talking to the media. As is your way, you use red herrings and straw men to try to distract, but all that matters is the FLOW community has spoken, and your vote last week, now no longer, hopefully in a few minutes, means anything. It does signify one thing, though, that you care more about finding ways to defend your despicable decision than owning it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Could the audience, please? I can't even hear the people on Zoom. Please. I will terminate this meeting. Ms. Kula-Cortis, would you wish to be recognized? Ms. Kula-Cortis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we cannot hear any comments or from the public. I don't know if Ms. Ansh has the same problem, but I cannot hear anything that's happening in the public area. But I would like to read a statement. I first would like to thank my fellow board members, Brian Delay, Vivian Kay, Aaron Lorenz, and Tom Bogdansky, for understanding your role as a board member and why we are here. We are here to serve the best interests of the students. This should always be our North Star. I would like to thank Dr. Dionisio for your professionalism, for your always being available to answer questions, for the thoroughness of the information you provide this board, and for your dedication to the students of our district, to the teachers and staff who work every day with the students who are directly impacted by tonight's vote. I thank you. I am sorry for the comments that came from this board table last week. The comments referring to our schools becoming a psychiatric institution is particularly disgusting and, in my opinion, unforgivable. The arbitrary targeting of mental health by some board members for baseless reasons was made worse by the cruel statements from this board table at the last board meeting. It was made worse by the surprise no-votes, once again blindsiding the superintendent and the rest of the board. I now come to learn that there is a feasible attempt to -- a feeble attempt to blame the yes votes because my Wi-Fi signal was lost. To the board members who voted no, you have no one to blame for your vote but yourselves. This vote should have been unanimous in support of our district's students. All the heartless comments aside, even if you don't believe that our schools should provide this service, it is not up to you. We have to provide these services for the students. So even if you, as a board member, want to insert your political, personal agenda onto our schools, you actually cannot take away the services to these children, many of whom have it built into their IEPs. You weaponize this board and use children in the process. Without Thrive, we will still have to provide the service. So even though you fail to see the moral, ethical obligation, we have to try and keep students in district. Even though you fail to see that it is the best practice for the students, even without any of that, a no vote means you want to send the children out of district. You want to clause the district at least one hundred K per student. Because you voted no does not take that service away from these students, it just makes them get it elsewhere. I would also like to debunk any implication that there were questions unanswered. It is the job of the board president to alert the superintendent in advance if a resolution is at risk of not passing. It is the job of the board members to tell him in advance. I watched the meeting, and I've heard Dr. Dionisio explain at length what it means to cut these programs. I know for a fact that you had ample time in advance of the meeting, be it through committee or reaching out to Dr. Dionisio to get your questions answered. That is a fake narrative. Mariana, you voted for Thrive last year. Judy, you voted for Thrive three years in a row. It's the same program. The vote should be nine-zero. We pride ourselves on being a high-achieving school district. We must provide for all students, whether Kim likes it or not. But most especially, we cannot, we absolutely cannot leave students with mental health needs behind. We must prioritize this, most especially in the face of the startling statistics. I would like everyone to understand that the argument we have enough other staff to do this job, and that these board members have unanswered questions, is a narrative meant to distract you from the real intent of their vote. Kim Ansh made it perfectly clear on July 24th, when she compared mental health to a toothache. Kim, we have children the same age. Your comments frightening. Emotions aside, facts aside, make no mistake, a no vote for these programs is simply cruel. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Ms. Sullivan?
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much.
I'd like to thank everyone who showed up tonight, and those that emailed their stories in deep concern over last week's vote to defund mental wellness in our schools. I would also like to thank my fellow board members, Mr. Bogdansky, Ms. King, Dr. Lorenz, and Ms. Kula-Cortis, for the time and effort that they put in to make this meeting happen tonight. I would especially like to thank Dr. Dionisio and Dr. Moriello for the time they spent preparing for tonight and dealing with the impacted families after last week's meeting. And Dr. Dionisio, for remaining steadfast in the face of the pressure you faced from board leadership to stall, delay, or cancel this emergency meeting. Last week's vote was a black mark on our district. Our job as board members is not to run the schools, it is to ensure that the schools are well-run. That's a very important distinction. I've said at previous board meetings that there are two types of people serving on this board. Those volunteering their time out of a sincere desire to serve our students and our community, and those that care more about power and micromanaging the superintendent to serve their own agendas. It's unfortunate that we had to get to this point to get the community's attention about what has been going on with this board since January 5th. But let last week's vote serve as a wake-up call to the community about the importance of having a Board of Education that represents the values of this community. The outpouring -- The outpouring of support from the public tonight and since last Monday has been truly amazing. And that's why we want to live here. That's why we want to raise our kids here, and that's the type of pride that we have in our community. Our focus should always be on what is best for our students. Our focus should always be on putting students first. Voting down mental wellness funding is not doing that. Outsourcing these programs to other districts at a hundred thousand dollars a student is not doing that. Nor is, you know, just like voting down harassment, intimidation, and bullying complaints is not putting students first, nor is racking up hundreds of thousands of dollars in unnecessary legal fees due to the overuse by this board putting students first. Every single tax dollar misspent is one less tax dollar that can be spent on programming for our students, curriculum upgrades, and extracurricular activities. So thank you again to our wonderful community for coming tonight and sharing with us. I hope everyone on this board has taken note of what is truly important, and that is the students, all of them.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sullivan? Yes, Ms. Mariani, thank you so much.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say at no time did I try to have this meeting not happen tonight. That's not true. I would like to read, in part, an email that I sent to Dr. Dionisio following the July 27th board meeting. I have read the emails from parents and feel for each and every one of them. I understand the guidance department, school nurses, learning specialists, child study team, school psychologists, social workers, and a long list of other specialists and professionals we've contracted with will still be working with students who need assistance in their mental health care, academic needs, and individualized education programs. Among other things, these professionals contribute to the creation and review of IEPs and 504 plans. Evaluate and assess students' strengths and overall functional capacities, and their abilities to participate in activities and respond to behavioral or medical changes, as well as provide treatment that are mandated for them. Now, I'd like to say, to all the parents who have voiced their concerns and sent emails, I hear you, and I completely understand your position. Please believe me when I say I want to see every single student in our district succeed. That is the absolute only reason why I'm up here. I hope RIH helps every student be the absolute best possible version of themselves. I did not think for a minute that mental health care would not be available to our students. I understand that many were still in place. For example, Child Mind Focus, who provides services and parent training, including student evaluation, consultation, and treatment. Beyond the Spectrum, who provides services by behavior technicians, board-certified behavior analysts, occupational, physical, and speech and language therapists. STARS, who provide speech and language pathologists. Pipe Tone Consulting, who evaluates, assesses, and provides treatment as mandated by IEPs. Expert Tutoring and College Counseling, along with Golden Advantage Education, who provides instruction for students in need of reading remediation. Janusa S. Rampola, who was a consultant on learning disabilities. Phyllis Kirsten Schoenfeld, who conducts evaluations and provides written cognitive reports. Bright Achievements, who provides services for all aspects of applied behavior analysis, including conducting functional behavior assessments, creating behavior intervention plans, design, implementation, and evaluation of environmental modifications by using positive behavioral supports, producing socially significant improvements in student behavior. Board-certified behavior analysts, who provide parenting training, behavior tech supervision, and collaboration with other professionals in the implementation of these plans. There are also independent contracted services for conducting psychological and cognitive student evaluations and reports for students in need, plus numerous other consultants in learning disabilities -- I'm sorry. Plus numerous other consultants on learning disabilities. I will add, I am not on the Education Committee, but it seemed to me that this subject would have benefited from a deeper discussion. After numerous questions have been answered by administration, I know more now than I did before I voted on July 27th. Last, I'd like to say --
Excuse me. There will be no comments from the audience. Each board member should be able to speak. Excuse me. You will be asked to leave pursuant to board policy if you do not allow all board members to speak. Every single one of them. Go ahead, Ms. Mariani.
Thank you. Before moving to Wykoff, my husband was on a Board of Education. For six years, he sat on that board and held the position of president at one time. He loved it. He and I became good friends with numerous teachers, and especially good friends with the superintendent. We were even invited to his wedding, which we happily attended. My husband and his co-board members strive to do what was best for the students, the teachers, and the community. In unison, the administration and the board worked tirelessly for the betterment of the school. There was no politics. There was no minority or majority. There was no bad press. And there was zero disrespect. Unfortunately, our experiences are galaxies apart. As much as I hope to contribute to the greater good and bring my rock-solid morals and traditional values to the board, I'm facing things I never expected. Honestly, I never had people not like me. I've never had strangers dislike me. And I've never had my intentions doubted or questioned. There is a good amount of lies being said, even tonight. There is harassment. There is intimidation. There are ethics complaints. There is name-calling. It is just wrong. None of that benefits the students at all. It's disheartening. As a reminder, this is a volunteer position that I am willingly and sincerely giving my best efforts to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Ms. King?
Before I read my statement, I just want to say, Ms. Mariani, you forgot to talk about false police reports.
No, that, no, excuse me.
You also, excuse me, I'm talking. You also basically made a statement talking about, you know, when people tell jokes about people of color, you know, this offshoot, people of color jokes, or people who are Jewish, and then go and say, "Well, some of my best friends are Jewish."
I've never said that.
You also basically made a statement talking about, you know, when people tell jokes about people of color, you know, this offshoot, people of color jokes, or people who are Jewish, and then go and say, "Well, some of my best friends are Jewish."
I've never said that.
So, excuse me, I'm talking.
Yes, you are, but you're talking about me.
Thank you, I'm talking. Excuse me.
No, Ms. Mar... I'll handle it, Ms. King. Ms. King, I'll handle it. Just let her finish.
Sure.
So, I think-
Please, audience.
I think that your statement pretty much shows... Excuse me. I think your statement pretty much shows that you're a bit out of touch. So I'm gonna go and read my statement now.
Audience, please, would you let Ms. King speak?
It's been a very rough week, and if the vote at the last meeting has caused me this much stress, I cannot even imagine the stress it has caused the students in the Thrive program, as well as their parents. The fear, the anxiety these families have endured over the last eight days was preventable. That is the one thing I want the public to know and keep in the forefront of their minds. This did not have to happen. I'd like to thank Dr. Dini Eneceo for the countless hours he and Dr. Moriello have spent on the phone with parents in the community, as well as the staff who were affected by this callous decision made by a few ill-informed individuals. I hate to sound cliche, but our children are our future, and we would be derelict in our duties if we did not do everything in our power to protect them. I find myself falling back on the adage that it takes a village to raise a child. So why would anyone wish to remove that homeschool connection that we have here in the RIH district? I find it even more suspect considering how two of the four members who voted to abolish these programs voted in favor of these programs. What changed? What changed? I wish to thank those board members who came together to get this meeting together as soon as possible so that we could quell the fear of these parents and students who depend on these services. Thank you, Mrs. Kula Kortes, Dr. Lorenz, Mr. Delate, and especially Mr. Bogdanski, who saw what was right and voted for what was in the best interest of the students and not himself. Thank you to the community for finding your voice and for gathering to support our students so that we can ensure that they have the means to learn in the best environment possible. In closing, I just want to remind the four board members why we are here, and it's not to micromanage what is going on in the classroom. We have a curriculum vote coming up in a few weeks, and I suggest that you leave the details to the experts.
Excuse me. Let her finish, please.
The RIH district did not get their exemplary reputation at some garage sale. This exemplary reputation was honed through years of hiring amazing teachers, administrators, and staff who worked to properly educate our students. Let the teachers teach, let the coaches coach, and let the administrators administer to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Ms. Sullivan, may I be recognized?
Uh, Ms. Ann, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. It's important to me to be transparent and honest, as I have been since the day I was sworn in on this board. As such, I did not understand that my no vote would impact the overall mental health and wellness program that was already in place. I believed I was voting against what I understood to be additional services to our current, already robust, mental health supports. It was not made clear to me that a no vote would abolish the entire program and not just the new services. Not until after the vote and the days following was this made completely clear. Why the confusion and lack of clarity? Because of a lack of timely information and data. When board members have legitimate questions or concerns that people do have the answers to but don't offer them up, then we're going to have a lot more issues like this because how do you expect me to take on a vote without all the information? You want me to approve 400 grand, or a million, or whatever it may be, or whatever agenda item, and you want to drop the bulk of the information on me the night before a committee meeting? How does that benefit the students or the district? This absolutely should have been handled much differently at all levels. This could have easily been avoided if the information that was shared at last week's meeting after the vote would have been shared before the vote. I was very clear in my comments in committee and on stage last week that I feel there is overreach in the schools, and I also fear we are becoming a psychiatric institution due to the continuous addition of new services. If a board member, though, states something like that, the first instinct would be to try to explain... Should be to try to explain how that fear is unfounded, or exactly what the consequences will be to the students if the district does not add a third clinician. This was clearly a vote on a critical program, so this should have been addressed. It was stated that the first indication that the resolutions wouldn't pass was when the vote was over and they hadn't passed, but that is simply not true. I gave indications, and I know I'm only one board member out of nine, and I have only one vote. So it seems that it was just assumed that regardless of my concerns, the overall agenda items would pass. But that did not happen. There are four new board members this year, that's almost 50% of the board. It would benefit everyone to have been informed that this was mission-critical. It would also behoove everyone involved to make sure there is support for something so critical prior to a vote. I was elected to ensure that the students are getting the best education possible and that the taxpayer is being protected, and this is just no way for us to function on an ongoing basis. I don't care if I'm on the board or someone else is on the board, I don't care if it's this year, or five years, or 10 years from now. We're just gonna continue to perpetuate the problems that we have if we don't get our act together, because this is no way to operate a large organization. This is a $70 million a year operation, and we're expected to make important decisions overnight without answers to important questions. Who would run anything like this? No big company would do this, no small company would do this, and no household would do this. So why are we doing this? I'd like to thank the parents who have contacted the board over the past week, and those parents and students who spoke tonight. I heard what you're saying, and it was very moving, and I've learned a lot. It was very uplifting to hear your success stories, as I unfortunately have heard too many stories about children who have had quite the opposite outcome within our district. Please know, it was never my intention to upset the parents of children who are benefiting from the Thrive program. I understand how important this program is to your child's health and success, and I'm fully cognizant of the mental health crisis that many of our children are experiencing. But understand, my role as a board member is not simply to be a rubber stamp and blindly vote yes to anything and everything. My role as a board member is to ask questions and get answers in order to make an informed vote. Board policy states that board members shall make data-driven decisions, and that is what I strive to do. I know this has been a very stressful week for everyone, but something positive has come out of this situation. All of us, parents, residents, students, board members, are now much more informed about this program and how it is helping to meet our students' needs. And we are all here tonight to make sure that all of our students' needs are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Emelo?
I can't tell if you're looking at me, I don't have the right glasses on. Are you wishing to be recognized? Thank you.
As a board member, my unwavering commitment to mental health services in schools is evident through my actions and demonstrated support in the last year and a half that I've been on the board. I firmly believe that the well-being of our students is paramount, and that providing adequate mental health resources is very important to their success. I have consistently supported numerous mental health initiatives and resolutions. In 2023, I cast my vote to approve approximately $3.6 million in salaries for counselors, aides, teachers, and staff related to special education. Additionally, I have consistently supported recommendations to hire multiple vendors for mental health, behavior-related services, ABA training, therapy, psychological services, evaluations, the hiring of various specialists to assist struggling students, teacher tuition programs, new job descriptions, and approved hours of support for writing curriculum, et cetera, for all related... All related to mental health and/or special education. I approved all the same recommendations in 2022. I've been a strong proponent of implementing the suggested changes for the PLESTIS report, a study conducted in 2019 to improve our special education program. This commitment is a genuine passion to support the well-being, development, and education of our children, and not a political stance. At the most recent board meeting, I faced a challenging decision, and my vote was rooted in genuine concerns about students' rights to privacy, and the questions and concerns of my fellow board members raised in committee meetings and over email that were not completely addressed. I want to emphasize that my vote was never a rejection, never a rejection of mental health resources or support for our students. It was a cautious decision, as I firmly believe that students' rights and confidentiality should always be protected. Now, armed with more comprehensive information, I am prepared to vote in favor of these measures that benefit our students. As a parent myself, I fully and really understand and share the concerns of fellow parents and guardians. Our children are our... Are our whole world, and it is essential to ensure their safety, well-being, and access to the support they need. Be assured, I will continue to advocate for mental health services, special education resources, and any other initiatives that benefit our students' growth and success. I genuinely appreciate everyone who shared their personal stories and experiences with Thrive program, with the Thrive program, and mental health support in our schools. Your voice matters to me, and it has always helped shape my perspective and decision-making process. I sincerely apologize for any distress my vote may have caused you or your families. It is very easy to draw negative conclusions and paint a bad picture around one's vote. I am disappointed to see deliberate misinformation and false narratives being spread by some individuals to create alarm and decisiveness... Divisiveness, I'm sorry, for personal and political gain. Such actions not only harm the reputation of our school district, but also detract from our shared goal of providing the best possible education and support for our students and staff. As a board member, I know I uphold integrity, transparency, and respect for all community members. My primary focus is on what is best for the kids in our district, and I will always work diligently to make well-informed... Well-informed decisions that serve the greater good of our community. In conclusion, I want to reiterate my unwavering commitment to mental health services and the overall health and well-being of our students. Every vote I cast is driven by the best interests of our children and our district, and I am dedicated to making informed decisions on your behalf. It is truly a privilege to serve the community I live in and love, and I will continue to work tirelessly to ensure a nurturing and supportive learning environment for our children. I will continue to focus on what truly matters, providing the best education and support for our students, teachers, and staff at RIH. Thank you to all those who believe in me and support my efforts to make a positive impact in our community.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, I was gonna turn to you next.
Since Ms. King brought up my name and the fact that I filed a police report, I'll share the information now, because personally-
Excuse me, audience. Excuse me. Excuse me. Go ahead, Ms. Mariani, I'm sorry.
The topic that we're discussing tonight is mental health, and I worry about hers. So I will say, you know what?
If you do not stop making comments, audience, I will ask you to leave. Order. I'm gonna call a recess if we do not stop this. Excuse me. I will call a recess if the audience cannot control themselves.
Point of order, if...
Point of order. Excuse me. Point of order. What is your point of order?
My point of order is that there is to be no name-calling of peers and board members on the dais. And I was just stating a fact, because Ms. Mariani was giving a litany of a list of things that have been done against board members, so I was just stating a fact that she did not include something. Excuse me.
So what is your point of order? I'm sorry.
My point of order is that Ms. Mariani is making personal attacks on me and my mental health, which should not be happening right now, and you, as the board sec... As the, you know, Robert's rules, should not be allowing her to say that about me. And the audience is correct, this is a board meeting, we are here to do the board's business.
So your point of order... I'm sorry.
Ms. Sullivan?
I didn't hear her call you a name, but, um...
If I could continue.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I will call a recess. Excuse me, security? I do not want this person pointing at me and yelling at me. Pursuant to Policy 167, Section 5F, I am permitted to ask for assistance to maintain the orderly operation of the meeting. I apologize. Ms. Mariani, could you please continue?
Yes, thank you. Um, I-
My point, can we defer to the lawyer, please?
Excuse me.
Can we defer to the lawyer, please?
You know what? I did not... Excuse me. I did not bring this up. You did.
Point of order.
So I am going to defend myself.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna... Your point of order. Your point of order. I'm sorry.
I would like to defend myself.
Can we defer to the lawyer, please?
I'm gonna call a recess.
Can we?
I am going to call a recess.
I would like to defend myself, Ms. Sullivan.
Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler? I'm calling a recess. This is your last warning. If this audience cannot control, I am getting up and calling a recess for this meeting. Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler? Mr. Disler? Pursuant to Policy 167, Section 5F, I am allowed to maintain an orderly operation of this board meeting?
So, I think there are, if you're asking, any... So there... We're looking at 167, I think there's C and F, so according to this, the presiding officer, according to board policy, may request any person to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable quorum. And then, I assume referring to Letter E, call for a recess or adjournment to another time in the lack of public quorum interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. So, according to your board policy, your board president does have discretion when it comes to the ability to run the meeting, specifically as it relates to reasonable quorum. So, I think the way the policy reads, in my opinion, if it's a certain individual, and C comes into place that indicates you ask an individual to leave the meeting, if it's most likely greater than one person, and therefore it appears that the meeting just cannot simply continue in any orderly con- cannot simply continue in any orderly conduct, at that point, the board president does have the right to call a recess or an adjournment to another time.
Thank you so much. So I respectfully request that the audience allow everyone to speak. Ms. King, on her point of order, I'm not sure what you wanted her to do. Did you want her to not make statements in the future with respect to your...
I would like Ms. Mariani to not make personal attacks on me and comment on my mental health. That is inappropriate, Robert's rules, and you can ask the lawyer. Robert's rule states that you are not to personally attack individuals on the dais.
Okay, so Ms. Mariana, do not attack her mental health.
Okay, I'm standing up for myself. Since she brought this up, that I made a police report, I think I have the right to explain. And if anyone was here at the June 12 meeting, and you heard Ms. King talk about suicidal ideation, then you would understand why this is appropriate. It was that evening, we were on our way into our second executive, she harassed me and said, "Exactly, what do you want to hit me?" as she took steps forward towards me. She then proceeded to say, "Everything was fine until you got on the board." Extremely inappropriate. Another thing she said, another thing she did was made fun of the way I was breathing. Not good, just not okay. And I also heard her make fun of someone when they asked for a bathroom break and said, "He must have a prostate problem." What kind of person does this? It's absolutely not okay. That night was the last straw, and I went to the police and I filed a police report. That's the end of the story.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, do you wish to be recognized?
I do, actually. So, basically...
Audience, I'm begging you, audience, please, I'm begging you. Please don't do this.
So basically, what actually happened, because I believe that Ms. Mariani might be confused with the facts, there is actually video evidence that Ms. Mariani came at me. There are two eyewitnesses, Ms. Colacortes and Dr. Lorenz. She came at me, got in my face, and I looked at her and I said, I did say that, "What are you going to do, hit me?", because I did feel threatened. I didn't say anything else. What Ms. Mariani continued to say was that she has better things to do than be here till 1 o'clock in the morning for this board. And I said back to Ms. Mariani, "Maybe you should have thought about that before you ran." That's what happened. Ms. Mariani filed a police report. It did not even make it to probable cause, because the judge said it was frivolous and had no basis of merit. So maybe you should give all the facts.
I did.
But the other thing that I'd like to say, and then I think that we should close discussion and go to a vote, is that I'd like to remind everyone that we are all human, and human beings make mistakes. It is possible that you, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Anch, Ms. Emalo, and Ms. Mariani made a mistake. If so, just say it. Although I did hear Ms. Emalo did apologize, so I do respect that. Say that you made a mistake, and now you are righting that mistake. I'd have so much more respect for you if you would just take ownership of that. You're using this platform to go out and say, "Oh, but I voted like this because you didn't do that. Oh, I voted this way because you said this, and I didn't think it was going to not pass." I don't understand. You don't vote no even though you think it's going to pass, or it's not going to pass. You vote because it's a good, feasible program for our students, because the educators in the room and the administrators who went to school for this, who have made this their life's work, have told you that this is a program that will benefit our students. That is why you vote. Not because of your political beliefs, not because, "What difference does it make if I vote no because it's going to pass anyway?" You vote because it's the right thing to do. Making mistakes is part of life, and it's how you take responsibility and correct those mistakes that matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Sullivan, may I be recognized, please?
Ah, yes, who is that speaking? I don't have the right glasses on. Yes, thank you, Ms. Anch.
Thank you. I just want to say I don't appreciate words being put into my mouth. I don't appreciate Ms. King misrepresenting some of the things I said tonight, and I don't feel it's appropriate for Ms. King or any board member to tell other board members how they should vote, or that they should apologize for their vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to make as well before we go to board vote. So I wanted to tell you, I wanted to assure you that I was actually lobbied to run for the board in 2019 because of special education. And I agree with the attorney that spoke in the office and the audience that there is a category for emotional regulation, which includes anxiety, depression, and all of the things that go with that. When I was lobbied, I was told that the special education program at our schools was suffering, and that most of the students that were suffering in the special education program were being shuttled to Indian Hills. And this disturbed me greatly, because I lived in Oakland. So I went and I did research, and I looked at the statistics for the number of children that were qualified for special education that were coming from our ascending middle schools, and they looked relatively normal in terms of their ratios. But then when it came to the two high schools, it seemed like Ramapo had too little to me. And I said, "Boy, that's concerning." And I knew about this PLESTIS report, it actually came out in 2019, the same year that I had decided to run. And I have read that report multiple times, numerous times, I reread it again before this board meeting. I was the first one, actually, on the board, I believe, I believe, to send it to Dr. Dionisio. I don't even think he had started here yet. But he had an email address, I believe, and I had raised it to him at that time. I also sent a copy to the special education director at Bergen County at that time, it's now a different person. And this is one of my biggest champion issues for this school. And I urge you to think from a 30,000-foot-up perspective on this. Number one, please do not assume that we do not have children of our own who suffer. Please do not assume that I do not spend thousands of hours over the past four years working on all board issues. It is an Olympian task. It is Olympian. And because I am a professor, for 22 years, I have students in my special, in my classes, and some of them are high school students. Feel free to call Carolyn Keahan at Felician University, who will testify, I'm sure, to my complete and utter dedication to students who struggle in class. And that includes Thrive students, that includes students who are general education students who need additional supports, includes special education students. It concerns me, for example, when I voiced at committee, that the number of special education students are declining at our school. Why does that concern me? That concerns me because the national numbers say it should be increasing. I have been fighting for years, and I'm not saying I'm fighting anyone, to get in-class supports for our general education classrooms. Do you know what that means? That means in the general education classroom, you have a special education teacher as well. Dr. Dionisio has been working towards that goal by approving the program for general education teachers to apply to be special education teachers. I have also worried also about board operation as president. It may not be the case next time. There would be an issue that would generate so much excitement and news coverage and, you know, genuine upsettedness by parents. It might be something else someday where a process is not followed. Processes are very important. I just looked in my board packet from June, the agenda for the Education and Personnel Committee did not make the board packet. That means that those board members who weren't on that committee never saw it. I don't want to get into the weeds, but I do want to tell you, I am an attorney for almost 40 years, and I will represent the truth to you at all times. This matter did not, in my opinion, go through our processes where people really had a good understanding of what the impact of voting no for. It was set up on the agenda as a yes or no, and that was it. Now, there was a member of the audience also, and I think board members, who have accused me of trying to have an agenda, trying to cause something that doesn't happen. I wrote a letter to Mr. Bogdansky and Dr. Dionisio on Sunday at 7:30 at night, and I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but I talked about Charis Solis and I talked about Thrive. And I was really reluctant to send that, but I knew as board president, when I was going to vote no on something, which I can't even think if I ever voted no on anything so far, I raised my hand, "Hi, board president over here. I don't think I can vote for this. I don't have enough information. I'll just read you the paragraph on Thrive. For Thrive Alliance, I am still uncertain as to their role and how they would be used. I saw that Thrive Alliance testified against a student and parent who is a patient of Thrive Alliance at school like ours in an easily ascertainable Google search. It was heartbreaking to read the parent's long road to secure special education supports for their child. The school ultimately lost the challenge to the FAB case, as one of our other audience members described. I would hope that no staff, mental health employee, nor any counselor from Thrive would testify against a student or family in a due process claim. If you think it's hard to get supports for your child and to go online and to get supports and to not, some people say they didn't even know about Thrive program, I cannot tell you how painful it is to go through a due process case. It is the most incredible anguish that a parent can experience, especially if you cannot afford a lawyer and you are litigating against a school-paid lawyer for supports that you don't really understand, you don't know what to ask for, you're at a loss." I went on, and I said, "I've not had a chance to see how this would really operate at the committee meeting level. Timing of information is Olympian to keep up with. I also believe a truly solid counseling relationship must be built on unbreakable trust, unbreakable confidentiality, and rock-hard confidence. I would feel more comfortable if perhaps the contract provided that the counselor would never testify against a student or family." So what does that mean? You can write in a provision in a contract that says that the counselor would not testify against someone unless they were forced to by subpoena, but instead, that request was ignored. And so that hurts my concern for these students, that you should feel that nothing will ever interrupt your conversations with a counselor, especially from an outside vendor. It worried me, too, that the vendor would be wearing Ramapo ID tags, and I thought that that was something that students should really know, that there was an outside vendor that was providing services to them. I cannot find a district using three Thrive counselors. Someone asked about why I changed my vote. So the reason why is because we were asked to get rid of CarePlus. And CarePlus is the only statewide mental health provider in the state of New Jersey that is approved to provide mental health services. And I thought, "Well, I don't want to give that up. That's a great name. When a student leaves our high school and they get services from CarePlus, they might go to the Veterans Administration, they might go to Bergen County Special Services, they might go to another organization where maybe they even have Medicaid supporting their health insurance, and they see CarePlus, and they say, 'Hey, I know that group, I trust them, I want to keep going to them.'" A lot of people talked about their parents not helping them. When they have that name recognition, I thought, "Hmm, that would really be useful." I tried to ask these questions. I cannot find a district that uses three Thrive counselors. I wasn't sure. It was a large undertaking. The data demonstrating the efficacy and the need had not been presented. I had also heard that Thrive was terminated from one of our ascending districts due to egregious billing and high staff turnover. That worried me, too. I wanted to have consistent counseling. Now, I trust the superintendent, now that he's heard my concerns, that he will make sure and keep an eye on this, but at that time, a week ago, my vote was a no, because I was concerned for these students. I was concerned for these parents. Somebody else asked, you know, if this program was in place for 10 years. It was only in place at Indian Hills physically since whatever, 10 years, I don't know the exact years. It was only until after the meeting that I learned that it was, started at Ramapo four years ago, and I'm glad to hear, since the meeting, I've learned that there are two rooms set up at both schools. I did not know that. I was happy to learn between that there were offices set up for the counselors. The superintendent has heard my concern about student confidentiality. I trust that he will continue on and make sure that those students are protected. I read all the emails. I wrote back to families. I did. I have written back to families for four years, and I will not stop now. I will absolutely answer whatever you asked me why I voted the way I did. You can call me, you can email me, there is no, there's no special plan going on.
Point of order, please.
I'm sorry.
Point of order.
This is the second time that you...
Right, this is. Pursuant to Robert's rules 4:29, without the permission of the Assembly, no one can speak longer than permitted by the rules of the body, or in a non-legislative assembly that has no rule of its own, such as ours, relating to the length of speeches, longer than 10 minutes. You are now at 10:34. Everyone is waiting. I would like to close discussion and go to a vote. Thank you.
So unfortunately...
I second the motion.
Unfortunately, I didn't take the number of minutes that you spoke, Mrs. King, so... But anyway, I'm pretty much done. I wanted to respond to some of the accusations from some of the board members saying that...
Ms. Sullivan, it's time to vote, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me, your point of order is not recognized, because we did not...
But it's Robert's rules, I defer to the lawyer.
Your point of order, your point of order is not recognized.
I have a point of information.
I'm sorry. So anyway, I am complete. Let's see, are we going to do a consent agenda?
I have a point of information.
Point of information.
I have a question for Dr. Dionisio. Did you receive any questions regarding Thrive from the board president when the agenda was crafted for July 24?
I received questions regarding CarePlus, but not Sage Thrive.
So, Dr. Dionisio, you did not hear me express any concerns at the committee level on Tuesday, when Ms. Anch had no connection and couldn't participate? That I thought that perhaps we should adjourn the meeting to the following Thursday? I did not say at that committee meeting that I had not had a chance to read the Thrive contract, because the links were being added the day of the meeting, when I was at your office signing documents and having a meeting with Ms. Sino.
My question was just about the agenda.
Ms. Sullivan, may I be recognized, please?
No, there was, there's a point of order that you want to go to the vote, so I'm not going to recognize you, I'm sorry. So let's do a consent, actually, do you want to...
I'll be back.
Can I have a motion to do a consent agenda for E7, E8, and E11 all at once?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lorenz, thank you. So we're going to do this by consent, but first I have to do a vote on the consolidation. Ms. Sino?
On the board's vote to have a consent agenda, Mr. Bogdansky? Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Emalo?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Colacortes?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Mariani?
Yes.
Ms. Anch?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you so much. Now, let's do the vote on the agenda as consolidated. You can take the vote.
Okay. On the motions to consolidate 7, 8, and 9, and vote on them, Mr. Bogdansky?
No, we already did the approval of the motion for consolidation, but now we're actually voting on the substantive portion of the...
Vote 7, 8, and 11.
Correct.
Mr. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Emalo?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes, again.
Ms. Colacortes?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Mariani? Ms. Mariani?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes to E7, yes to E8, and no to E11.
Okay. So, duly noted. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes to all.
The motion's carry.
Thank you so much.[617.12][617.12](APPLAUSE) That leads us to our second public comment. I need a motion to open the second public comment. Anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bogdanski, seconded by Ms. Dr. Lorenz. I just want to check with the board members on Zoom. You had said before that you could hear the audience, but then you said later that you couldn't. Can you hear now? There is somebody at the podium, I'm just going to wait one minute, because I don't know if you could see this, but there is a fair amount of people that are leaving the room. I can't quite hear because there's just normal chatter, so just wait a few moments for them to leave. If you could just exit quickly so that we could continue on with the meeting, thank you so much. If you could just quickly leave and.
Don't go, don't go. Some of this is for all of you, just so you know.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. So, Ms.
Danielle Campatello, Wykoff.
Can I do a test check with you for the people at home?
Sure, test, test, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Danielle Campatello Wykoff. So, before everybody leaves this room, I think the biggest thing that you should all think about why we're here is because of mental health, and what I agree with 100% is keeping these programs, so that's number one, and I am a parental right person. But what is sad to me, along with some of the stuff that's going on on the stage, is some of you in the audience.
Ms. Campatello, I'm so sorry. Could you?
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
I'll face the board. I didn't want to be rude and have my back to you, because that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. The point I'm trying to make here is the temperature in the room should be taken for the fact of mental health. You guys keep talking about mental health and being kind and being, being nice, excuse me?
Could you please not interrupt the speaker?
All of you, all, every single person in this room, that's who I'm talking to, including myself right now. But I'm just trying to get a point across, while we're all talking about mental health and how important it is, and how it is so important to be kind and think about people's feelings, the snickering, the clapping, the comments, the rude comments, the name-calling from everyone, that's what has to stop. It stops with you. That's who needs to stop, each person. You are, you need to take ownership of yourself in order to provide kindness and everything else. So, while I'm thrilled that you actually passed this, this should have never been up for a vote tonight. So, I agree with that. The way this was handled was despicable, okay? More questions should be asked prior to the vote. So, if you don't know the answers to things, that's when you start digging, but with kindness. You do what we suspect. The things that I heard here, people were changing their vote and their, and their feelings, and they were being, they were being humbled, and they were coming to you with a sense of feeling, maybe thinking about their answer or their vote last time, with regret. And the snickering and their comments and their, oh, the snickering and the behind me, that's mean. It's just mean. It doesn't matter who, what they voted for, they're changing their vote now. Be kind, take your words, everyone of you that came up to this podium and talked that way, take your own words and fill this room, and when you walk out, with more kindness, more acceptance. Everybody preaches it, but not enough of you do it. We all should be doing it. So, these people changed their vote, maybe they just didn't think about it last time. Who cares? They changed their vote. Let's move on, let's go forward. The end.
Thank you so much.[865.00][865.00](MUTTERING)
Joe Kylie Wykoff, a couple of things, Ms. Sullivan, due process is not the most agonizing thing for a parent to experience with their child, losing the child is, which these programs aim to prevent. Ms. Mariani, you sent an email to the superintendent telling him how the roles in the services and the schoolwork, he has a doctorate in that, and knew that when he made these proposals and recommended them to you. Also, welcome to public office. It's funny you brought up harassment and intimidation while voting down HIV reports from the school.[899.36][899.36](APPLAUSE)
Audience, please, I'm begging you, please.
The most important thing is it didn't have to be like this. You shared, you probably would have voted for this anyway today, but if you had done your due diligence before that last vote, then parents and children wouldn't have had to expose their trauma for you to do your job. I also want to point out that agenda item E8 cost about as much as you spent in legal fees in six weeks trying to figure out how to reject HIV reports and findings. And finally, the board council and committees spent dozens of hours on these agenda items. It took the superintendent today just 10 minutes tonight to explain it very well. Ms. Sullivan, if you don't have enough trust in your superintendent, in the experience in educational lawyers in your committees, and don't have the 10 minutes to listen to the superintendent, again, an expert in education, and then lament to us that you don't have this time, but that you are also reading 2019 reports before you came in, I fear that maybe you should reconsider your position and reconsider running for reelection. If you don't have the time to do this well, you shouldn't do it at all, there's obviously too much at stake. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[973.12][973.12](APPLAUSE) Audience, please, I'm begging you, please.
Karen Nash Franklin Lakes, I just spilled my iced tea. I think I get so incredibly nervous when I'm up here that I turn into a lunatic. Number one, I said last week, or before the, at the last meeting, that I didn't think it was the business of the school. I've learned a lot since then, and I do believe there's a place for it, so I take that part back. I still believe, though, from my own experience with my own children, being in this school, my son calling me in the middle of class and saying he just doesn't think he can be here anymore. He was extremely popular and a top athlete, so it doesn't just happen to the kids that are not seen. He was a star here, in the newspaper every week, and if you look him up, you'll see. But he has anxiety, still does, only I took care of it myself. I wasn't trusting in the school, I didn't know if his coaches would find out, I didn't know if his friends would find out, and I was shielding him. I don't know if I would change that to this day. My daughter has the same issues, but handles it better. I'm glad this passed, but I do have to say, I do support the four people that said no because they have the right to say no. To me, there's one person on this board that I keep saying it about, and she just feels like she's a poison. I know you seem to love her out there, but she just seems to be so angry all the time that it creates this like thing where you want to go back at her for some reason. So, that's where my anger and my nervousness comes from. I'm usually a great speaker, I, I, it was my major in college, believe it or not, but I believe in the people up there. I just wish there wasn't so much anger, because we feel it out here, and it's really bad. I trust the superintendent, I do. He's been around, he knows what he's doing, he seems like a great guy. I'm new to all this, but don't, if someone makes a mistake, chill out, okay? It's not that big a deal, because they learned from it. And you know what? So did I. So, maybe mistakes are not so bad. So, what you say affects everybody out here, including the people that would really like to like you. But the intenseness of it all, it's not the people that came to the board, because this has been going on a long time from what I hear, living here since I'm five years old and I'm 60. So, chill out, maybe talk about things first, stop blaming everybody, and maybe a mistake wasn't so bad today, because I changed my mind too, and now I trust a little bit more. But come on, chill, it's okay. We are just human beings trying to do the best for the community and our own kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1164.83][1164.83](APPLAUSE)
Delamino LaForgia Oakland, I'm going to finish what I had to say. Now, mental health, last meeting, Tom Bogdanski stated that out of, out of committee, Care Plus and our profit medical model, third-party school provider was not renewed this year, which is fine. It's precisely what the district should do, review and evaluate, just like we did the law firm, and Thrive, which has been at Indian Hills for 13 years, which I was told, and four years at Ramapo, would be enhanced. Why not? I like change, I like new, but what Mr. Bogdanski and Dr. D failed to explain is why? Why was the change, why was the change made? What was it based on? Where's the presentation like in ESIP? We didn't get any of those. We didn't see if other service providers were considered. Was there an analysis presented from the last program? What does our cohort, cohorts district do? What does the Flow K through 8 do? That's analysis. And board members Kim Ansh and Judy Sullivan also had questions, which I prefer, assumed led to their no's. Regardless, once I did, regardless, but not once did I hear any of them, any of the four no's proclaimed they didn't want mental health here. So, Dr. D, you needed to tell people that their vote was not going to end mental health support. Please answer that question when people were concerned. That led to misinformation, which was publicized and amplified by Vivian Yun-King and Erin Lorenz and her town criers of misinformation. And how does that help the district or our students? Tonight, all three agendas did pass because the majority wins, but a lot of questions have still been unanswered, and I'm still waiting for the presentation. Dr. D, you are the keeper of the public trust, you should manifest calm. I urge you to keep the calm like you offered tonight. Unfortunately, that last board meeting, you stoked the flames. And it's an election year, and I heard this script before, if curriculum doesn't pass, the schools will close, if the school loves, the school will lose funding, lie. Dr. Fogarty was fired, we have no lawyers, lie. The ESIP is a cost-saving, free-money initiative, 1.3 million, cost savings, zero. We need to.
I'm sorry, audience.
I think I should get a few seconds from before, when people were haggling me from behind. So, let me finish. Dr. Lorenz, you think there's no such thing as too much health care? Mental health? I disagree. Items framed under mental health resulted in the opium crisis, lobotomies, and women putting the mental health.
Excuse me, audience, I'm asking her to wrap it up.
Last time I checked, only the board member kicked me out.
Ms. LaForgia, could you please wrap it up? Thank you, thank you. Please wrap, please.
I'm going to end with, I teach.
Ms. LaForgia, Ms. LaForgia, you can't talk anymore, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
I'll come back.
I'm so sorry. Excuse me, audience. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Kristen Paxus, I'm from Oakland. You've met my daughter Zoe. I have to say that I am thrilled beyond belief that tonight this vote was reversed and passed. For the four of you that voted no initially, had my daughter's statement or comments make you feel, I hope they made you feel uncomfortable. I did notice, though, when she was done, we had a big sigh and a motion, I don't know, maybe did you find her tedious, or were you just happy she was done talking? But it should make you uncomfortable, because I'm going to bet that prior to tonight, and prior to all the bruhah and the emails and the phone calls and the carrying on and the social media, you probably don't have somebody close to you that suffered with a mental illness. For the perversion, the perversion and the misinformation and the comments to be stated as they were, such as, let's compare it to a migraine, and let's talk about headaches, and let's talk about dental coverage, shows to me that it was not about, you didn't understand what the funding was about, or where the money was coming from, or what the program was, Ms. Ansh. It shows to me that you did not really and truly think that if we've had these programs here in the past, that these services should remain. Maybe you have a question about whether we should supplement them, but why would you look to rescind them or pull them away? But tonight, that was rectified, and that makes me thrilled. My daughter no longer goes to Indian Hills, she graduated last year, and I'm thrilled she graduated. One, because it was a milestone in her life, two, because she's alive. And she's alive in part, not only because of the mental health help and assistance and the treatment she's receiving outside of school, but because of all the wonderful people in the school. Her guidance counselor, Amy Carangelo, the nurses, Lisa Wasserman and Shelley Storzum, all her teachers, they care. The $60,000 you guys have now earmarked for the teacher training is not enough. It should be triple that. Our children spend a minimum of seven hours a day in school. If they play sports, it's longer, if they're in clubs, it's longer. These teachers interact with them regularly, over the course of four years, just at the high school. And these programs are so important, this, these services are important to them. And I am so thrilled that you have thought about this, rethought about it, and then realized that this was going to be an absolute community uproar. We are the flow area, we are the RH district, we should be trendsetters. We should have other communities within Bergen County and other towns within the state looking to us. We should not be rescinding programs. We should be setting the limits. We should be setting the standard. And what happened here the last week of July was disgusting. I thank you all for your time, I thank you for your evening, and I thank you for your positive vote on this situation.
Thank you so much.[1618.15][1618.15](APPLAUSE)
Eddie Severs Wykoff, Ms. Emelo, I want to thank you as part of your remarks for apologizing. That was one of the things that Ms. King recognized when she talked about it, is that, and one of the other people that came to the podium said, you know, perhaps people made a mistake, or people got more information, and they, they made a different decision, just be happy about that. But I think owning the decision is important, and I think that apology was important. And so, sitting in the back, I appreciated that. Many of you working with the schools, I'm sure, have heard the phrase intent versus impact, right? And so, for those of you that voted against it, you talked about how your intention was not to put people through this, was not to put people in a place where they had to share traumas in order to have the decision changed. But the impact of your, your vote was that for those people, and was so much more. And so, when you have that impact, that apology means a lot. I'm glad that it was rectified tonight, I'm glad that everything passed, but it's important that everyone own their decisions and apologize, not just say I've changed it, but apologize for the hurt and the impact, regardless of what the intent was. Ms. Sullivan, I would, I would ask, sitting at a lot of these meetings, tonight I've heard you ask the people to stop applauding a lot. It doesn't, that doesn't often come from you, it's not often the case, and so it seems to depend who is applauding. And so, I would just, I think, but even, I just want you guys to do everything, right? Take care of the students, impact the students in a positive way. I'd almost rather nobody clap ever. Do your, do what you need to do, help the students, but I think it stands out and it becomes louder, and it becomes more because it, it's not happening the same way every meeting. And I believe if it happened the same way every meeting, that the feel of it would end up being different. You may agree or disagree with how you're, but that's my perception, often sitting in the back and watching what it, what it feels like. So, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. I appreciate the positive decision for helping the mental health of the students, and I look forward to continuing to watch you do your work to impact the students in that way. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1797.83][1797.83](APPLAUSE) Thank you so much.
Good evening. Kathy Schwartz, Franklin Lakes. I was intending to speak before you voted, but I didn't get the opportunity because we ran out of time. Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Emolo, by the way, I'm very, very happy and relieved with the results of tonight's vote. Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Emolo, you were on the board last year, and you voted for the Thrive Program, and you didn't seem to have so many issues. Why didn't you have so many questions last year? What changed this year? Mr. Budansky told us that the most recent education committee meeting was four hours long. I don't understand how people come out of a four-hour-long meeting with unanswered questions. I don't understand how the superintendent could come out of a four-hour-long meeting and not know of these significant concerns. Ms. Sullivan, you're the board president. It's your job to let the superintendent know when something doesn't have board support and might fail a vote. Your job, that's your job as the board president. You failed. If the reason it failed was unanswered questions, why didn't anyone ask the superintendent at the public board meeting when he was sitting right next to you? Why do you have to hide all your questions behind closed doors and committees? Put them out here where we can hear them. We would like to know the answers to the questions, too. He was sitting right here, and you had the opportunity to ask the questions. If you had unanswered questions, the proper thing to do is abstain. You abstain from the vote, and you say, I don't have enough information to make this vote. You don't vote no. You four voted no. That seems to indicate that you really didn't want this program. One of you stated tonight, my vote was not a rejection of the program. Well, yes, it was. A no vote is absolutely a rejection, by definition, clearly. This week, I read a very disturbing Facebook post, and I quote, "It's important that all three agenda items were anticipated to be approved with a majority vote of five to four, yes with Tom Budansky." How would this author know what the anticipated outcome of the vote was supposed to be? What kind of games are being played here? Are the votes being arranged behind the scenes in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act to cater to political interests? Do four board members think it's okay to vote no to appease a political base, assuming the motion will still pass and everything will be okay? This kind of political game-playing by board members literally puts children's lives at stake. How dare you? My children graduated from Ramapo in 2020. They have already lost two of their classmates to suicide. Did any of you know that? Did any of you even know that? There is no such thing as too much mental health. How dare you?
Thank you so much.
Margaret Bennett, Franklin Lakes. I'm glad you have a lawyer here tonight. I'm glad because he would have heard some of the four no votes from last week. Evaluate the superintendent in public, which is an ethics violation, and I hope he reminds you of that. Kim just told us that she didn't know what she was voting for, which was pretty clearly stated in the resolution itself. So that means she's telling us, does she not know how to read resolutions? And then she blamed other people for...
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bennett. The marker, we just lost our two board members. Who's computer?
They're still on, but he'll fix the screen.
My, my time needs to be restarted.
Did you start, stop the clock where she was?
I was about the 2:40 mark.
I'll take your word for it, Ms. Bennett, 2:40. I would like to make sure that the video is resumed. Just received a text message from Mrs. Colacortis, Ms. Zino, that she was just kicked out. And then immediately prior to that was another email, another text message, as I did not see. Me, Helen, and David cannot see or hear anything except each other. Let me just respond. Are they, can you, can they hear you? This is why I wanted to be the co-host.
Ms. Ansh, can you hear us?
Can they hear you, Ms. Zino? Ms. Zino, can...
Ms. Ansh, can you hear us?
I'm gonna call her, actually.
We can't hear you. No, because it'll get feedback.
Hi. You can hear me, guys. We can hear you. I'm here, Sarah. But we can't see anyone, and you can't see us.
Okay. They can actually hear you. I'll talk to me on the side. So, Ms. Ansh, can you hear me? I just got an echo. I think maybe, Ms. Zino, you might have to mute yours. Mute your laptop, because now we have audio. It is muted? Do we need to take a recess, Dr. Dinesio?
No, we'll continue to wait as we try to resolve this issue.
Only because it's 10:00 PM, and if it's gonna take longer than maybe four to five minutes, I'd like to use the restroom.
So can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Colacortis.
Okay, so we hear you guys, and you can hear us. I think it's okay to continue. We don't have to see anything, do we? Can we agree with that?
Can you hear the audience members, though?
Can you have somebody test it and tell us?
Ms. Bennett, would you say testing, one, two, three?
Hi, Helen.
I can hear her. I can hear you. Yeah, so I think we're fine with just listening.
Mr. Disler, can you...
We can't get video back.
Mr. Disler, can you hear me? Dr. Dinesio, in the future, could I please be made co-host in this circumstance, so I can communicate with the board council?
So can we continue?
Mr. Disler, can you hear us? And can you unmute yourself and just respond?
Mr. Disler, can you hear me? This is Judy Sullivan, the board president.
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. I have a question for you.
Sure.
So I'm not able to see the two participants, and I'm not able to see you. Is it your advice that we can continue without violating any rules?
You, you can. There's no, no, my, my concern when it comes to visual tends to be executive session, but in public, certainly, I have no concerns as long as both the board and the two members who are presently virtual are comfortable with it. You know, prior to all of this, prior to Zoom, board members, everyone, so I would have your teleconference. So I'm comfortable as long as the board members are comfortable.
Okay. Could I just ask Ms. Ansh and Ms. Colacortis if you're comfortable going forward without any visual?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Any other board member have an objection? Oh, I know, it's very loud. Okay, so, Mrs. Bennett, is your timer reset to 2:40? You were at 2:40. I'm sorry. I'm gonna take Ms. Bennett's word for it, 2:40. Can you reset it to 2:40, Ms. Zino? Do you know how, or more or less?
Okay, I have it at three minutes, but I'll stop it at just when 20 seconds are left.
Okay, you'll let us know. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bennett. You can proceed.
Okay, so I had been saying that Kim Ansh told us tonight that she doesn't know how to read resolutions. She didn't know what she was voting for. That kind of scares me. Doreen, there, as usual, are literally no words for your comments. Mariana voted to reject mental health and then told us tonight that's not what she did. That's exactly what you did, but you didn't do it last year for the exact same program. And Judy, tonight, again, was factually compromised. She voted three times for the Thrive Program in the last three years, and then tonight and last week, she threw anything she can to the wall to see what sticks, to get you, the public, and apparently some board members distracted. This week, we have seen through their surrogates and apparently through communications by individuals on this board, they have tried all week to distract from the facts. Last Monday, they took away a program that keeps kids in school. They voted against children, and then they tried to blame other people, including the superintendent, who was pretty clear at last week's meeting as to what their vote meant. Why would a board vote to remove a program that is best for students, and even if they didn't want it, is best for taxpayers? Because they were clouded by false narratives and are stuck in a web woven from the insistent need to oppose. One thing is certain. The no votes willingly voted against children. They willingly voted against certain children, and no matter what they said tonight, cannot undo that. Please pay attention. This vote is a red flag. I have watched for the past seven months as this board has attempted to own our schools by injecting one individual's unchecked power. They have pulled the rug out from under the administration on a number of things, voted no to hires because of politics. They took away the authority of the superintendent to speak to legal counsel, and they handed it to Judy Sullivan. They walked in motion after motion in a coordinated effort to concentrate power to this, to some board members and away from the people who are legally required to run our schools, showing there is a board within a board rather than a board of nine...
Ms. Bennett, your time is up.
Anne Cedar, Oakland. I was initially going to speak in the first public session, and then, as I was sitting and listening to the incredibly brave students that were speaking, their parents, and the stories that they were telling, real-life, true stories, I realized that I didn't have anything to add that was more important or helpful than what they were saying to you. And then I listened to the comments by the four people who voted no, and your explanations really didn't make any sense. You talked in circles, and more importantly, you doubled down. And all you had to do was say, I made a mistake, which I think someone in the public said, they made a mistake. Great. When you make a mistake, you apologize for it. You, you, you recognize that you made a mistake, you apologize for it, and then you, and then you vote yes. You didn't do that. I know, Ms. Emolo, I guess what you did was an apology. I don't really, I didn't really find it to be an apology. I think you said the words, I apologize, and then you went on to explain why what you did was really not what you meant to do, but you did. You voted no. All, the four of you voted no. You didn't abstain. You voted no. You came here to say that you didn't have enough information. When you don't have information, you don't vote. You don't vote no. Right? Ms. Sullivan, you have all this power that you wield at these meetings, but you didn't postpone that, that vote. You didn't say, we can't vote on it and that agenda because we don't have enough information. You went and you voted no. And the reason you did that, and the reason the four of you voted no, is because you continued to put your politics instead of doing what your job is as the board. And you can sit here and say that it's not political, but we're not idiots. We know it is. There is no place for politics at the school board level. The fact that the, that the, that the four of you have turned this board into your personal political vehicle is shameful, but it's, but the shame is on all of us for voting, for voting for you in the first place and allowing you on the board. There's gonna be an election. We're paying attention. This, everybody that showed up today, we're paying attention. We're asking you to start putting the students first and leaving the politics out of it. That display, Ms. Mariana, that display with the police report, no one cares. This isn't about you and your, and your fear or whatever the, the, that there is that between the two, the two of you, the five of you, the nine of you. No one cares. We care about the students. That's why we're here. We don't want to see that anymore. We want it to be professional.
Thank you so much.
Carla Rodriguez from Oakland. I first want to say thank you for approving this tonight, and I do want to take on what she said. The whole bickering, Ms. Sullivan, you should have done something about it. The whole police report, this, this, we're not here as parents, this, I'm here tonight, and I left seven of my children at home to be here tonight. I do not want to hear you guys bickering. I do not. Absolutely no way. That shouldn't have happened. One. Two, the four no's had two, two opportunities that night. Ms. Vivian gave them one, to go back on what you guys said, to bring it forth, to table it, to do something about it later on. If you guys had questions, one of you should have stepped up and said, let's put this to vote later on. None of you did. Not one of you. There wasn't an apology from any of you either, which a lot of parents wanted you, to hear that from you guys. We are putting our children's education in your hands, and what are you doing with it? You're so divided. That can't happen as a board. You guys are supposed to come together to help our children. I don't understand why the four no's, if you guys had so many questions, if you guys had so much to think about, why not make it happen later? Why not give it another chance? Why just delete it? And why? Why now, after 13 years of this program, helping all these kids? What happened that changed from last year to this year? Did the price change? Did, what changed? What was it? Thank you.
Thank you so much. We only have five minutes left.
I won't be long. Beth Sprowitz, Wykoff. I have to say, like I said earlier, my kids have been out of high school, out of, out of the school system for quite some time. I think I met Doreen, and I wasn't even sure if it was Doreen or Denise. I met her once. I, I've met Tom. I've actually said I wanted to talk to Tom before I made a decision on my votes. Unfortunately, I did not meet any of you other than Tom. I have to say, we have kids in this meeting, high school kids. I'm assuming she's high school. High school kids. I'm just curious, as a board, what kind of example you think you're setting for these children? I understand we're in high school, and that's exactly how you all behaved. I'm not understanding why. I don't know if you have a beef with her, if he has a beef with whoever. I don't care. You were acting childish. These children came to the podium and acted so mature, so mature, she had me moved, and I was crying, because she spoke beautifully. None of you behaved in such a manner. You all should be ashamed of yourself. I'm glad I do not have children in this school system, that I'm only paying for it, because I... Because I can't imagine being a parent and having my kids, knowing that you guys are up there running the show, that's appalling. You should watch back the video, thank God there's a video, and watch your behavior. That's what we tell to do to children? Watch your behavior? Please, watch your behavior. You're teaching these children that come to this meeting how to behave by representing. That's appalling. Good night.
Thank you so much. I think this will be, according to Ms. Sino, do I have time for both of these speakers? Yes?
The original stop time was 10:02, but you may- it's at your discretion.
Okay, so we'll just accept these last two speakers because they've been standing and waiting. I hope the Board will indulge me.
Again, Mike Otisman. I am actually from Wayne. And similar things are going on in our district as are going on here. And the first thing I'd like to say is, everyone talks about keeping politics out of School Boards. They're supposed to be nonpartisan. So now let's get real. Because when one of the two major parties in our state comes out and says they support the parental rights movement, and the parental rights movement is embedded in what has been going on in our Board of Ed meetings and Board of Ed elections for the past two years, I think we kid ourselves when we say that Board of Eds are still nonpartisan. And the actions of Board of Ed members prove that. Now, I was one of the first people to stand up in my district and speak in opposition to what I saw as the wrong direction for public education. And when I stood up, I was heckled, I was interrupted, people name-called, people tried to stop me from speaking. And then they extended that onto Facebook where they called me a disbarred attorney, mentally unstable, a pedophile, and those were some of the nicer things. So it's interesting now, after two and a half years of people on our side of the aisle putting up with that, that now the people on the other side of the aisle are complaining that we're doing the same thing. Now that we've found our voice and have stood up in opposition to them. There's a phrase for that. It's called mirror propaganda. And mirror propaganda is when one side tries to say that the other side is using a tactic that they've been using all along. So I'm sick and tired of this tactic now where they get up and they say, "Be calm. Don't snicker us. Don't interrupt us." Because now that they're getting some of their own medicine, they don't like it. It's time for everybody to try to talk. It's time for everybody to try to come to some sort of compromise. But it's not time for using tactics like mirror propaganda to try to accuse your opposition of doing what you've been doing for two and a half years. That's not trying to meet in the middle.
Thank you so much.
Elliot Bannon Wykoff. Ms. King was right when she said a mistake was made. Students with the IEPs were left hanging, their parents were upset. A mistake was made. And in less than 10 days, the mistake was corrected. It's what adults do when they make mistakes. I've been coming here since this new Board and I expected that because that's what I expected. Mr. Delay, I want to, really, I want to say, really good speech, your objections were well thought out, and you avoided ad hominem attacks. So thank you, and I appreciate that. The real story here tonight, I think, since everything was corrected and it happened so quickly, as I've been watching this unfold, are the insidious accusations that the people who voted against the agenda item don't care about children. So these are some of the quotes from Mr. Delay, no, I'm sorry, not Mr. Delay, I'm sorry, Mr. Lorenz, Ms. Kulaikakis, and Ms. King. They said, "They're despicable. They're disgusting. They're targeting mental health. They're callous. They're cruel." This is a defaming that's not made in the good faith of challenging a bad decision, but to bring something more personal into it. It's the politics of personal destruction. Yeah, we've all heard that expression, except now we're watching it. Suddenly, a bad decision becomes despicable. It becomes callous and hateful because they hate children. You know that to be a lie. That is just so horrible. What we're seeing on college campuses, you're bringing to our stage. This is not political. That's the point. I've been coming here since January and I swear, I've seen the four of you relentlessly attack the people that seem to be in the majority, saying almost the exact same words. I gotta be pretty sure you've talked about it beforehand. You're bringing politics here. When somebody makes a mistake and you're working together, you kind of have to get their back. You have to say, "Hey, you know what? They made a mistake, but we righted it tonight." Not, "They're despicable," unless, of course, you have an agenda and you are political. And that's what this is turning into. And that's really a shame. I came here because I thought I would see people working well together and we'd be looking out for our kids. And instead, what I'm seeing is that it looks like this has become personal for you.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Mr. Bogdansky, thank you. Anybody want to give me a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mariana. Let me just make sure the Board Secretary gets that. So there was a motion, Ms. Sino, to close public comment. It was moved by Mr. Bogdansky and seconded by Ms. Mariana.
I can do the roll call now, please, to close public comments. Mr. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Emolo?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Cor- sorry, it's late. Colacortes?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Mariana?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion to close comments passes.
All right, before I make a motion, call for a motion to adjourn, I just want to announce our next anticipated future meeting date is Monday, August 28th, which will be the proposed curriculum changes, public hearing slash regular public meeting, right here, again, in Ravapo High School Auditorium. I need a motion to adjourn. Can someone give me a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Bogdansky, thank you.
Second.
Ms. Mariana, thank you. Motion to adjourn this meeting. Ms. Sino?
Yes. On the roll call to adjourn, Mr. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Emolo?
I can't hear you.
We were supposed to have a second Board comment.
Oh, you are correct. She's making a point of order.
I didn't hear a point of order from her.
Ask the attorney because you're in the middle of a call, a roll call.
Mr. Disler, are you still there?
I am still there. Sorry, I missed the orders of the motions. I thought things were wrapping up. Walk me through exactly what took place.
I overlooked the section in the agenda for Board comments. Ms. Mariana has asked if she could make a comment, I presume.
Ms. Emolo.
Oh, Ms. Emolo, I apologize.
Wait one second, I'll pull the agenda.
And we're also in the middle of roll call to adjourn the meeting, but maybe I should have asked for Board discussion on that.
I see. So after the public comment, there was a, it looks like the agenda had for a second public comment, so you're in the middle of a roll call to adjourn the meeting. There's now a point of order to continue with Board comments.
There was no point of order. There was no point of order. She simply asked, "Are we supposed to have Board comments?" There was no point of order.
So, Mr. Disler?
So if you're in the middle of a roll call to adjourn the meeting, that is a primary motion. I believe you should fulfill the roll call.
I could have a mo-
Unless there is a, I guess, secondary motion for public comment, but I believe the primary motion is ready to vote.
But I could also make a mo-
There's a motion to second it.
Just to be clear, it's not public comment.
I'm sorry.
He keeps saying public.
Sorry, my apologies, Board member comment. My apologies.
So, Mr. Disler, are you sure about that? I can't make a motion to reopen in the middle of a roll call because the agenda was not followed correctly?
There will be a minute.
I'm gonna look to-
There will be one second as I pull your policies. Typically, you have a policy on-
We do have a policy that actually sets forth the order on the agenda and I did not follow that. So we would have to make a motion to waive that policy in order to avoid that second Board comment.
There will be a pulling of that agenda now. So under your policy, it looks like, I guess, you added a Board member, Board comment at the beginning of the meeting?
We have two Board comment sections. The first one says Board discussion and the second one says Board comments, and this is prescribed by Board policy. We actually just changed this policy earlier this year, so it's something that was discussed and approved by the Board.
Is that post-March 2023?
I'm sorry?
Is that, did your change come post-March 2023?
We didn't make any further changes. I'm just describing to you that that motion to, that action-
Oh, I see.
It was-
Okay, so it's, there's an open Board discussion and then a Board comment.
Yes, it's my error. I overlooked it.
So, procedurally, I think if someone makes a motion now, right, to proceed with Board member comment, I think that would be, I think someone could second that, you make the internal vote, you then have the comment, and then finally then, at the conclusion of that, you can complete your vote for-
Okay.
Even if we're right in the middle of roll call?
That's what he said.
It is very, usually when you do a roll call, we frankly continue, but I'm looking at your policy, you are supposed to have the Board comment. So I, if a Board member believes that the agenda should be followed and makes that motion, I would, my opinion would be to follow your agenda, specifically as you have a policy on this.
Okay.
And I think it appears, at least unless the motion was to bypass the agenda, which is, again, is set by Board policy, my view is you should probably follow your agenda because, again, it's set by policy. It's not simply an agenda that was released.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to follow the agenda as prescribed by policy and as was announced and released that we have the second Board comment. Can I have a second to my motion?
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Mariana. Ms. Sino? Does everybody understand what they're voting on?
We're voting on whether or not to allow-
Board comment.
-Board comments-
Right.
-in lieu of the roll call that we were right in the middle of to adjourn the meeting.
It's not in lieu of. The attorney just told us that it's not in lieu of.
Okay, so we're voting on whether or not to allow Board comments?
Correct.
On the roll call, Mr. Bogdansky?
No.
Mr. Delay?
No.
Ms. Emolo?
Yes, because it's part of our agenda.
Ms. King?
No.
Ms. Colacortes?
No.
Dr. Lorenz?
No.
Ms. Mariana?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion is five against the motion and four in favor, so it does not pass.
So at this point, you should now continue the roll call to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Disler. I don't know where we left off on that.
I have it.
You have it.
We just had asked, I'm up to Ms. Emolo to adjourn.
Oh, yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Colacortes?
Yeah.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Mariana?
Yes.
Ms. Ansh?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
No.
Okay. The motion to adjourn carries. The Board is adjourned.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.